District Amendment ZDA 02-25. In the room, would anyone like to speak to the Barnhart zoning? Sony?
Feel free to.
Step up, yeah. Have to take my glasses off to see that far.
Yes, we are just here to, my husband and I, to request the division of our property of our forty acres, forty point eleven acres, into two lots of twenty acres. We followed all the guidelines by Albany County Planning Director Gerstein. I can never pronounce his name correctly. Gerstein? And Welms, the proposal has been approved by our HOA, Bloom Klein and James Jackson. It's been approved by the Laramie River Conservation Wildlife Silvane Water to go from the ag to ag residential. And the only request with them is that we reseed if there's any construction done there. It's been approved by the power company, Albany County Treasurer and assessors. That's why my husband and I are here.
Very good. We'll talk to you again in a few minutes. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Barnhart zoning district? Is there anyone online that would like to speak to the Barnhart zoning district? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I move to close the public hearing for the Barnhart zoning district amendment ZDA 02-25. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'd like to open the public hearing for the amendments to Chapter Five of the Albany County zoning resolution. And is anyone in the room, would anyone like to speak to the amendments to Chapter Five of the Albany County zoning resolution? Either in the room or online? Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Hi Mitch, come on up. I recognize even with my glasses.
Oh, that's scary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name's Mitch Edwards, I'm with Nicholson Tangeman. We represent Warren Livestock, the various entities that own property out here in eastern Albany County. I'm here to speak against the Chapter Five zoning resolution amendments and the zoning district amendment process. What, and I'm gonna, instead of getting up twice to speak on both of those, I'll just have them both here at one time. Our opposition to this is, as you know, that the county is currently in litigation on appeals relating to the offer protection overlay. Part of those issues involve the amendment process and how the county goes about going through amending zoning districts. What these amendments that are being proposed to you do is complicate one that and create additional layers to the onion that have to be unwound, most likely to result in additional appeals. But the issue is, is that anytime you're dealing with the amendment process for zoning, we need to be giving the individuals who are being affected in their property who's being affected notice of the actions that are going on so that they have an opportunity to come and address their grievances if they have any to this board. What these amendments are trying to do is to create a process where if the county wants to change your zoning, they don't have to provide you with direct notice. Instead, they can, they can go about the process of simply providing notice within the boomerang, which, no offense to the boomerang, but I don't know that many people are taking circulation of the boomerang or online, instead of giving you direct notice. But if I as an individual want to change my zoning, guess what? I have to give direct notices to all the neighboring landowners and everybody else so that they can come and complain. And so what we're really trying to do is make it easier for the county to affect somebody's property rights and making it harder for an individual to exercise their property rights. And there's no reason, we should just simply be transparent about this and be giving notices to the individuals before we affect their zoning rights. So anyway, that's, that's my comments. And we'd ask that you vote against those amendments now or at least table them until we get through the process with respect to the the appeals that are in place so we know we're not just simply dealing with different layers of it. Thank you.
Thank you Mitch.
So Mitch, I have a question for you. Are you, your objection is the legislative sweep of just carte blanche changing the zoning at will instead of having individual landowners have to apply or?
We're not, we're not objecting to the, we object to the process of calling legislative versus adjudicative. But as far as the county being able to change zoning, we're not objecting to the county being able to change zoning through comprehensive plans or other things. We're simply saying that the process needs to be that the same as if an individual wants to change their zoning. That is providing notice to the individuals that are being.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make comment? Is there anyone online that would like to make a comment on amendments to Chapter Five of the Albany County Planning and zoning resolution?
Mr. Wyatt Terry has his hand up.
Oh, okay, I can't, I can't see that, thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
Hi, hi commissioners, this is, I'm not wanting to comment on that, I have something else. So I just wanted, when public comments come around, to have an opportunity to address the board.
We will, we will. That'll be after these public hearings.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Darren. May I have a motion to close the, the public hearing for the amendments to Chapter Five of the Albany County Planning and zoning resolutions?
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing for the amendments to Chapter Five of the Albany County zoning resolution. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next public hearing would be amendments to the zoning district amendment process of the Albany County zoning resolution. Would anyone like to make public, or public comment on the amendments to the zoning district amendment process of the Albany County zoning resolution? Either in the room or online? There's no hands up down there? Last time, would anyone like to make comments on the amendments to the zoning district amendment process of the Albany County zoning resolution? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing for the amendments to the Albany County design and construction standards. Oh no, I'm sorry, wrong one, to the zoning district amendment process of Albany County zoning resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'd like to open the public hearing for amendments to the Albany County design and construction standards for small wastewater facility and regulations for permit to construct, install or modify small wastewater facilities. Would anyone like to make comment on this? Would anyone either in the room or online like to make comments on the amendment to the Albany County design and construction standards for small wastewater facilities and regulations for permit to construct, install or modify small wastewater facilities?
Madam Chair, I move that we close the public hearing for the amendments to the Albany County design and construction standards for small wastewater facilities and regulations for permit to construct, install or modify small wastewater facilities. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Move on to item four, comments from the public. And Mr. Wyatt, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, Madam Chair and the board, I just wanted to say thank you to Chelsea and Kayla and Tracy for the very informative town hall meeting that we attended last Tuesday at the fairgrounds. Thought that they did an amazing job, were able to answer questions for anybody who had it. And it was a great way to interact with our county government. And thank you to everybody who attended and participated in that.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Anyone else like to make public comments to the public? Tracy?
I'll use Mr. Wyatt's comment as a segue. Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. We are going on the road again tonight. We're gonna do our town hall and centennial at the library. I think there's a few attendees here that kind of live.
It was fun.
I mean, government budget numbers, it'd be made it fun. But we'd like everybody to join us up again, 5:30 at the Centennial ever.
And next week.
And next week at Rock River, 5:30 at the town hall on the 13th, so.
And just go, I only got really good comments and people were very, very happy with that.
Thank you. And thank you Darren too.
Yeah, thanks Darren. I'm gonna make a public comment. I received this, yes. Go ahead, if you want to come up, that's fine.
Just to be brief, but I have a handout and I will be brief. My concern, that'll keep coming back for how to do with our grandchildren, our children. I mean, oh no, this is our home, it's been since 1982. And I'm concerned about water, both in town and some estates within town. But, so I wrote this children's book called Where Does Water Come From? Where Does Water Go? When I was in public school, seventy-five years ago, we had no idea about water or about offer. So I can make you a copy if you would like, but you may be over informed, I don't know. But that's why I come back, is because water gives all of us life. So I'm sorry, I left my papers here last night.
We had a nice place to keep them safe.
And I realize for you all, water's not the only issue. I knew one of the neighbors really well, so I made a special handout for you. But just, and I will give it to, but I try to take one day at a time. But lately several days have attacked me at once. Thank you for what you do and for the spirit of living together that makes Albany County special.
Thank you very much. Reba?
Well, the pictures are coming, I suppose.
Oh, okay.
My name's Reba Epler and a couple days ago, we stopped at the VidaVu exit and there are hundreds and hundreds of bottles of pee at that exit. And it is unbelievably gross. And I was curious if it's on both sides. And so the side that's the worst by far is the side that's on the south of the interstate. And the north side, it has some too, but there more is just paper and plastic trash. So then I said, what kind of trash facilities are available for truckers to, you know, like leave these somewhere? So at the, at the exit up on top of the summit to go to the rest area, there's like two trash cans, but they're jam packed. And so my thought is that this is not very appealing to people who are coming here. Albany County is saying that they want to promote tourism. Another exit where this is like really bad is at the Remount Ranch exit as well. And then over on 287, my Aunt Nancy says that she picks up four wheeler loads and four wheeler loads of trash very regularly. So I think that people are not finding a place to dump their trash. And it just, my, my thought is truckers are coming through and just like dumping these bottles of pee right there. And one way to address it would be to like put flyers in various languages in, you know, there's that truck stop twenty miles west of town. But just to do some sort of like an information campaign about like, hey, this is not okay. A lot of truckers are from India and Sikh even, and so they have pretty strong religious beliefs about the environment. And I really don't think it would be hard to communicate to the Sikh trucker population that this is not acceptable. And that would be a pretty low cost way of doing that. And also probably building some sort of a trash facility there. Obviously, it would be the responsibility of YDOT to do that. But if the pictures would come up, it would be, you would be pretty alarmed to see the amount of trash there. So I, my thought is, I think we should address this because it's just, it's unsanitary and it's plastic waste. And so it's just this compounding problem of trash blowing out in the wind. And eventually those bottles will break too. And so then the, the plastic will just blow all over. But that would be what I would love to see happen for Albany County is some sort of addressing of this problem.
Well, I wish your pictures would have come up.
Me too.
I can certainly attest to what Reba's saying currently and in the past. When I worked for Weeden Pest and we did all the rideaways and the unimaginable numbers of bottles filled with urine is so disgusting.
Yeah, and I mean, you could do it a number of ways, but I think that the public information would be awesome. Just that truck stops alone would be a great way for Albany County to say, hey, I, we've got places for you to drop these off. So it's not just dumping it out into the environment. So that's my thought.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to make public comment today? Okay, so I was given this letter this morning. And I think it's important because it will, it pertains to everybody in Albany County. It says, "To my fellow citizens of Laramie, for many years Laramie has been served by one of the best, most progressive and high performing EMS systems in the region. Our reputation and capabilities are the envy of many. That era is, I fear, coming to an end. Last night, or last year Iverson Memorial Hospital and the Laramie Fire Department were unable to agree on terms for the Laramie Fire Department to continue IMH and their inter-facility medical transports, taking IMA patients to Fort Collins, Denver, etc. This has thrown a financial, thrown the financial outlook of Laramie Fire Department into some degree of chaos. And as a result, the impending layoffs of all five of the Laramie Fire Department's non-fire paramedics. To understand how tragic this is, a few blunt facts need to be disclosed. Laramie Fire Department runs around 5,000 calls per year. Nine out of ten are medical, ninety percent. For the last three years, five non-fire paramedics have run on a conservative estimate of fifty percent of all call volume. These five paramedics who have been, who have between them eighty years of experience, save lives every year, performing interventions only a paramedic and in some cases only a critical care paramedic can provide. Staffing requires, the Laramie Fire Department means that less than one of the five non-fire paramedics are on duty. The ambulances are staffed with at least experienced EMTs. Our community is blessed to have excellent firefighter EMTs. Nonetheless, there is an unappreciated large difference in training and capabilities between the EMT and even an EMT intermediate and a paramedic or critical care paramedic. These terms are not interchangeable and neither are the skills and training. It is true, for most patients, the differences will be small. But for some, in particular children, who with complex medical issues like cardiac respiratory seizure issues and victims of massive trauma, it can be the difference between life and death. Two people in particular, Chief Johnson and former EMS Division Chief Mike Hutch kiss, worked together on the groundbreaking non-fire paramedic program. They devised a cutting edge way to bring paramedic level, level care to as many patients as possible, as effectively as possible. This combined fire EMS model is adopted now in more and more places. It makes a lot of sense. Even though paramedics have substantially more training, they remain more cost effective to employ than firefighters. So taxpayer money ends up going further. It is exceedingly expensive, way, way more expensive than this paramedic program, both in cost and time, for a fire department to send its firefighter paramedics to school. The EMT intermediate level that all Laramie Fire Department firefighters must obtain is relatively rare nationally. That's because the National Registry of Emergency Medical Technicians, the agency that oversees the EMS nationally, sunsetted the EMT intermediate level in 2013. The curriculum is no longer being developed, the books are falling apart. There will come a day in not too distant future when the certification will have to be abandoned. On that day, citizens of Laramie will lose the following capabilities in pre-hospital medical care entirely. Pain control, basic seizure treatment, advanced cardiac life support, pediatric life support, intubation for unstable airways and much more. And then the true bill will come due. The cost of getting enough firefighters to the paramedic level will be absurdly expensive. And once they obtain paramedic certification, expect them to leave because firefighter paramedics make more money than anyone else in EMT, except in Laramie. The five of us save many lives over, excuse me. The five of us save many lives every year, performing interventions only we can perform. But to make the tragedy of what's happening entirely sentimentally clear, let me tell you of just one life that was saved this year. Laramie is no stranger to bad weather. Life fight crews are frequently unable to get here. This past January, we had a beautiful baby who was in dire straits. IMH was doing good work, but the baby needed to get to Denver's Children's Hospital as quickly as possible. Flights were unable to get there. The ground team from Children's was in New Mexico. The roads were ice. We had one option, we had to risk the weather and get the baby there ourselves. One of the critical care, non-fire paramedics from Laramie Fire Department and a former paramedic flight nurse from Iverson Memorial Hospital took the baby down to Denver with its lights and sirens nearly the whole way. The ambulance pulled up to Children's with almost no time to spare. Things were so urgent, the pediatric intensive, I'm not sure how to say that word, but the pediatric doctor was pacing up and down the sidewalk, met the ambulance outside the emergency department doors. I shudder to fathom the potential outcome if we had not had the resources in town. And it is these very resources, these people, the only people capable of providing that level of service to the community are losing their jobs. Laying off people who have dedicated their lives to advanced medical care in the current context makes no sense. Somewhere in city management is an unawareness or an unwillingness to properly value the capabilities of a non-fire paramedic. All five of us have begun to move on. Even if the tune changed tomorrow, I doubt we could stop the bleeding. This is not a last ditch attempt to save my job. This is a warning. There is a national shortage of paramedics, having five with eighty years of collective experience with advanced critical care training, common only to flight crews managing to run fifty percent of all call volume teamed up with excellent firefighters. I dare say unheard of. And so unfortunately, I leave you with one final grim thought. In the next few months, the level of care for the Laramie Fire Department is unable to provide will clean, will decline such that more of the citizens of Laramie and Albany County or those passing through will die. They need not have. And this is sincerely Jordan Hayes Paramedic. And I just felt that this needed to be brought forward in a public setting. This will be taken to the city council this evening. But we, it looks like we're going to be losing some really good care out of Albany County, so. Okay, does anybody have any other comments to the public?
There's a gentleman here from Ripstall.
We have an agenda, I don't.
Oh, we have, okay.
Seeing no further public comments, you know, I have a motion to close public comments.
Yeah, I move to close the public comment. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item five, consideration of changes to the agenda.
Madam Chair, if we could remove item number twelve. The next door I agree that you can obviously go with.
Doc, would you not want to put it back up to me?
I think it'll weigh a little.
Was that, that was for the tank and the product, right?
Right.
Was there, did anybody even acknowledge?
I'm guessing through this bit, it's just that they didn't see the, it was out for a bit.
Okay.
Do we have any disclosures this morning?
Not for me, Madam Chair. I have one on item ten, it's a customer.
Okay. And item, I have none. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda.
Moving, we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Move on to item eight of the regular agenda. Discuss opportunity to celebrate semi-Quinn centennial, 250th anniversary of the founding of our country. Good morning Bailey.
Good morning commissioners, I feel like it's been a long time since I've been up there. Just because I missed the last break. We'll see. Let's see, so this item I had in front of you back in beginning of April, this is a great opportunity that Commissioner Hoff passed along to me. Since then, I know there've been some discussions with the Albany County Historical Society and Albany County Historic Preservation Board. And I believe they're present to talk about some of their ideas. One of the things I did do after I met with you guys in April is I reached out to Nick who, at the state, who is responsible for this grant in regards to that resolution and what that committee looks like that we do have to name basically. And he sent me a draft resolution, I already passed it along to Jennifer. She's gonna work on it for one of your next couple meetings coming up because we'll need it for the application. Basically, what Nick said is you guys get to name that committee. You guys can either form it, you can name it to some, a committee that's already present in the community, however you guys want to do that. So I'll let Jan speak. I know they have some ideas, but by the end of today, I need some direction on who you guys would like to name, what direction we're moving for this application so we can start working on the application.
Thank you, Bill. I saw Jan come in.
I'm right here.
Come on up.
Well, I'm Jan Thirkelson. And Terry and I have talked a little bit, a bit about this last Tuesday. I pulled together a group of representatives from across the county, at various organizations. So they represented probably, I would say, we're at twenty to twenty-five organizations. And just asking what they already have thought of doing over the next year for the 250th. And basically, it's, it's a communication group because it's a huge unwieldy group for really coordinating anything, but it's a wonderful group for communicating and the synergy of ideas. And perhaps coordinating with a, a central committee on some countywide events. Some of the countywide events that we thought of that are coming up are Statehood Day, July 10th. And of course, the Jubilee Days Parade. Freedom Has a Birthday, July 4th. Family Night at Albany County Fairgrounds, that's July 31st. And Mary Mountain wanted me to make sure to mention Louisa Swain Day, which is September 6th. So those are some countywide events we've kind of thought about that perhaps several groups could participate together as a 250th thing. several groups could participate together as a 250th um, thing. And then, and then everybody will be doing their own thing too. Everybody has a lot of ideas of things they're going to take on. To get with me today that I see are um, Wendy Lynn and Mary, and then Karen Bard is on Zoom. I, I think that's it from the group of representatives that gathered last week. Um, do you have questions for me?
Um, do you have some suggestions on how you would like to see this uh, proceed?
Best executed?
Well, um, my, my vision is to keep this great big group communicating and occasionally coming together because really last week, the synergy that was bouncing off of people was great. And just everybody knowing what everybody's doing and going, oh, we could partner with you on that, or we could partner with you on this grant, whatever. Um, but um, as far as a, a central committee, what I did see on the resolution language um, that Nick sent to Bailey is it needs to be representative of several organizations across the county. Um, and so we have the Historical Society and the Historic Preservation Board here. And, and I've also heard uh, the idea of giving it to a committee that already has um, had success in good community, community-wide coordination and grants. And that to me, my, my brain right, right away went to Albany County Historic Preservation Board. Um, so I, I'll, I'll do whatever. I see myself as a communicator. I've been um, successful in engaging a lot of people and talking to each other around this. So, and do you guys want to speak?
Good morning. Sorry, I have a frog in my throat. Um, I'm Mary Hopkins and I'm the vice chair of the Albany County Historic Preservation Board. Uh, there are two grant opportunities associated with this funding through the state. One is for the county itself. And the Albany County Historic Preservation Board is prepared to prepare that grant application um, and on behalf of the county and work with Bailey on that. Um, there are other grants that are available to nonprofits and other governmental agencies. And each, so each entity can apply for uh, support for their project. So whether it's the Daughters of the American Revolution, um, the Iverson, all right, you know, the, the Laramie Plains Museum. Each one of those groups can, can propose their own uh, project. It has to be funneled through this higher level committee, the one that you are appointed. Um, so what we've talked about is having kind of a stepped group. And the higher group would be just really being um, that mechanism to get those grants submitted because they have to be approved through the county committee to then to go to the state for funding. And so that higher group is going to have a lot more and just administrative work to do on the grants where each individual organization would be making their own proposal and their own budget. And they'd run their, they'd get their own funding. Um, so the funding that would come to the county, of course, would go through the county treasurer. Um, I did ask, it will require, of course, we'll have a contract with the state. Uh, we can get 90% of the money upfront for the project and then 10% uh, back when it's completed and the final report is accepted. And the county is available, it's a cap at $10,000. So that, when our discussion happened, it's not a lot of money for us, um, for the county. But we felt like we could pool a lot of the work together, um, like promotion and graphics and maybe hire a videographer so we capture all of these events. So we would do a, a larger, I would say, an administrative grant just to cover those kind of um, uh, workings of this whole 250th anniversary project. Um, but actually that, the county, uh, the county committee would be just a smaller subgroup of the big committee and would be the mechanism to apply for grants. So you have any questions? And it's, this is all still in early stages of trying to.
Still kind of liquid.
It's still really liquid, yes. How we should actually implement this and get it going. But at least we had one meeting and we had a lot of turnout. And as, as Jan said, there's a lot of enthusiasm for this. And most people are going to be working on projects that they're already have in place. You know, they already have ideas, they already have something that was in the works and this will just help them implement.
So would this $10,000 be just used pretty much for administrative?
That's what I think our, uh, the, the preservation board would be promoting to do an administrative grant. So that each, like, we don't have 10 different marketing plans. We have one marketing plan. We have one calendar, we schedule things so they're not on top of each other. So our group would be just handling the logistics of the project. Um, so that, that's kind of our, our beginning vision.
Can you talk about that idea you talked to about, about um, combining with the city? Because the city can apply for a 25,000 cap.
Right. And I have reached out to the city um, to find out exactly what they are planning, if they have something in the works, whether it's going to be Freedom Has a Birthday or whatever they want to do. Because they're, they could get $25,000 for a project. Um, and just so we're not, you know, let's not duplicate each other's efforts. Uh, I haven't heard back from the city yet, but I've talked to Sarah Reese, the grant writer for the city. And she would probably be handling that on behalf of the city when it goes in. But we could have a, you know, unlimited amount of grants that go in for each organization. So um, I believe there's a couple million dollars set aside by the legislature for this. And it's, it's a first come, first served kind of thing. Um, I don't know if they've actually, um, who knows more? I don't know if they've actually awarded any money yet under this uh, funding source. But there is a big committee within the state to review these and send them to the governor's desk.
So Bailey is right, we need direction on a grant today. Because that one in, the county grant is due June 30th, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Bailey, have we already applied for this grant or had, do we have?
We have not.
Albany County is listed as one of the examples.
It is. I think they just randomly picked county names and threw us as examples.
And we start with A, so.
No, we have not applied. It is due June 30th. I mean, right now, I'm less than 60 days out. I do need some sort of direction on what we're gonna apply for. We do have, there's a resolution piece. The narrative piece doesn't seem all that tough, but it's still taking a whole group of people, putting them together and getting it done, which is, can take time.
Well, and building a budget for this um, is probably the biggest challenge because exactly what we decide to spend, you know, 10,000 on, it's got to be figured out upfront to give them the budget.
And so is the uh, Historic Preservation prepared to do something like that?
Uh, we're prepared to work on the grant and, and do logistics of this. I don't see us uh, doing a big event. I don't see our board doing that. I think other, we will certainly be involved with, if someone wants to do a big event, we would help. But I think more, our, our role would be logistics and working with Bailey to get contracts in place. And um, you know, I am concerned a little bit about how much time this requires of all of us. Um, and how, you know, if we hire a coordinator, someone's going to have to make sure that coordinator's actually doing the job with a lot of supervisory effort to make sure that all comes together. But I can't see anyone on our board taking this on um, and trying to ramrod the whole thing. I just, I don't see that.
I would echo that. I mean, I think everybody that I saw at that representative meeting is stretched and strapped. Um, and, and so, and, and if we take, do a county grant and hire a coordinator, that might take a whole $10,000. Yeah. And then we wouldn't have publicity money. So that's why the idea of possibly coordinating with Laramie, City of Laramie on a grant that they put in, try to get some publicity on countywide um, for whatever's going on to let people know where and when different things are happening.
And we've reached out to Main Street to, to see what they can provide in terms of, but we haven't had a chance to have a conversation.
I do see the Albany County Historic Preservation Board. If not, they're, if they're not designated as lead committee for Albany County, they definitely have representation, representation on the committee for the county.
And well, in the, in the resolution from the state, it requires that you have um, broad range of representation in the county. So it, just the, the board would not be the only entity on this committee.
Right.
And I could see, you know, the Historical Society, the Laramie Plains Museum. Um, there were people from um, the American Heritage Center. I know we had a lot of representation there and those are kind of the key groups. Jan's got a really good list that um, that showed up for that first meeting. And that is what I would think we would call on to begin with. Um, so it's, but it is kind of a herding cats world out there on this thing. So, and $10,000, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not very far. When you start really diving into this, if we have to hire someone to manage this.
There's a Bailey, I have a question or two. Um, I'm guessing your charge today is to try to figure out how to get a grant for the county that's due by June 30th. And then the second thing, maybe to develop a process so that we could work on other grants? Is that what I would care in here?
The other grants piece, to my understanding, is all on the nonprofits. It's not anything the county is being a part of. If we need to support, then yes, we would come to the board if you guys want to support or not. Um, when I originally read this grant, I was thinking it'd be from one singular project. You know, the city does have Freedom Has a Birthday, you know, something like that. When uh, Jan came to me with this idea, kind of an overarching, I did reach out to Nick to make sure this was something that was okay. And he did say that there's nothing in the rules that, um, that it wasn't. Um, so we could move forward with that. But I do need to know what direction you guys want to move forward because again, it is herding cats. We do have to make sure everybody's on board. We have to get the, all the information from everybody. Um, so I, you can take it, you guys can pick the project how you want. If you do want this overarching, that's great, we'll go that way. If you guys have something else in mind you want to do and not do this idea, that's fine too. Um, but we do need to start working on this because again, it's not that big of an application. And I can do it in a short amount of time. I've done them before, but it's a better application if I have a little more time. So, does that answer your question, Pete?
Right, yeah. And so, uh, thank you all for being willing to, to volunteer, I guess. What I thought would be, would you be able to select from within yourselves like an executive team? So that there would be not 30 people.
For ourselves.
I mean, would people be, want to be voluntold, uh, to be on the executive team?
Because these are the mystery organizations and the people that came. Just so you get an idea.
So I'm going to just be really uh, very blunt. And um, so are you guys willing to ramrod this whole deal? Because that's what you're going to have to do with all the cats. She said yes.
Yeah, and I can write the grant and Bailey can make it better or whatever.
I'm happy to draft it.
You, I mean, when we do your Historic Preservation Board applications, they're, they're charged. Yeah, I'm happy to. It's a pretty good partnership that we do have in regards to grant funding. The way I would kind of see it working on our end, county gets a grant, county writes a contract, I just watch the money go in and out. I don't want to, I don't want to hurt the cats.
Well, you don't have time to hurt the cats.
So if we're appointing a committee, then we can appoint the Albany County Historic Preservation Board as the executive committee for, I'm not even going to try it.
By 250th.
I'm not even.
It took me a lot.
I've got a circle of paperwork in front of me and I'm not even going to try it. And then you guys, uh, as a committee can conscript, uh, other members as needed or as willing.
I, I would think that would be the logical thing to do at this point. And we, it's just going to have to uh, come together uh, over time. And if we have the appointment to do the first grant application, then we will get that.
Get it rolling.
Get it rolling.
Well, I'd move that we appoint the Albany County Historic Preservation Board, uh, the current board as the semi-quincentennial uh, board of records for the Albany County. And here's um, designate their actions or what.
That's the name they're going to work with.
What do you need verbiage for this?
Um, Jennifer, would I need verbiage for this?
Sorry, I was trying to trace it. Verbiage for.
Move as presented then.
I think so. If you're talking about appointing the rec, board as the committee for the county.
The Historic Preservation. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's all you need. And then I can put the resolution together and have it forward at the next meeting.
And are you guys okay with the project that they got forward with that overarching piece?
Yeah, I, I think that would satisfy all involved or at least try to accommodate all of them.
All right.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies, very much. Yep. Holler at me if you need extra leashes. I've got plenty of you. That's on the wrong page. Number nine of the regular agenda, discuss Rocky Mountain Blue Sky additional funding request for the Albany County Search and Rescue Building. Bailey.
So, I think you guys, month, six weeks, I don't even know at this point. Blue Sky is, keeps kind of moving the goalpost on us. And they, I went back and forth a few more times. Finally, I got just, what the heck do you want? Tell us what you want and we can see if we can do it. The last email I got um, from them was on April 11th. What they want us to do is Albany County put in 30%. Albany County then put another additional 30%, but that 30% then we apply for the tax credits. And then 40% will come from the Blue Sky grant. I told him I am not uh, making a decision without bringing it to the Commissioners, so here I am. Those total amounts would be, uh, actually Leo um, did send you guys an updated uh, quote um, for this project. Um, because of course prices keep increasing. Um, but, so this would put the county, the county portion would be $62,162. Then the county would also need to upfront six, another $62,162. And then that, we would then apply to that direct pay through the IRA. Then Blue Sky would be responsible for $82,883.
$82,000?
Yeah, $82,883. This was from the latest quote that we got from Leo. So, questions, direction? I know Sheriff is on, he had a comment about this.
Sheriff?
Yes. You guys hear me okay?
We can.
All right. Well, thank you Commissioners for your time. Uh, yeah, in, in looking at the updated quotes from Blue Sky and just kind of building on the comments that I made last time that this came across. Um, as I informed you guys, if we got to a threshold where we were going to have to pay a, a bulk of um, installation and equipment for these solar panels going in at the search and rescue building. At that point, it, it's not economically feasible for, for us to move forward on it. So um, the county would be putting up a large cost. Like I said, uh, in terms of getting essentially our money back in terms of becoming energy you know, neutral at the SAR building. At this point, it just doesn't make much sense, you know? It, if we got to only up 60% of the cost uh, to get solar panels in. Um, and then apply and kind of cross our fingers and see that we get reimbursed on part of that. Might as well just. Might as well just stock some money away, um, and then cover a hundred percent of the costs at a later date. Uh, and then we can, we can work at trying to reduce those, uh, reduce the energy costs that we have at, at that SAR building, which, which are low, but, um, said it, we're, we're at a point where we're kind of negotiating with the grant program. Which, which is not in the spirit of what a grant program usually is. So I don't really see this as being economically feasible uh, for that search and rescue building.
Well, I might take a different tact. The sheriff, I think I look at the savings, um, over the lifetime of the 20 years. And it looks like it says $85,049 to the good. This seems like a reasonable investment to me. If we asked for a sheriff's, uh, facility with 40% off, I think we'd probably jump at the chance. Um, but, uh, you know, this is Rocky Mountain, uh, power and this is money from, uh, Albany County is one of the largest contributors to the Blue Sky program. So in essence, this is Albany County, um, funded money, uh, that we would be turning, uh, down. Um, now 40% is not what we would like. Above 40% is nothing to, uh, sneeze at. And then, uh, there is the opportunity for the 30% uh, repayment, uh, from the IRA. Um, there are some concern that that wouldn't be repaid, but that is an act of Congress that has been passed. Um, and that is being litigated right now to undo that act of Congress. We would have to have another act of Congress to undo it. Um, so, uh, as I sit here, um, our budgets are tight, um, certainly. But we can't really turn our nose up at $85,000 after 20 years. Uh, that is the warranty of solar panels. There are solar panels that go way beyond that as far as producing, um, electricity. So.
I don't have much, I, I, I'm just looking at this, the solar graph didn't actually change for the repayment. But the contribution did. So what the documents that we have are a little misleading as to what the cost, I have to, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with the sheriff that we need to either pocket the money and, and wait, um, and then perhaps build a system that does facilitate the exact needs for the, the sheriff's building. Um, because right now it doesn't make financial sense.
So your essence, Commissioner Hoppe, is that this is not accurate, what was produced by a solar, uh?
So this was, this was based on, no, his graph didn't change from contribution to contribution. And I guess it's a wash at this point, but we're relying on the 30% now to be guaranteed to make it economically feasible to keep it within the 20-year limit or keep it within the 20-year warranty.
Well, I think at 10 years, um, it looks like it's somewhere short of $40,000 in savings. Um, and so I understand what you're saying, but the, uh, I guess your hesitation, as I'm hearing it, is that the federal government won't be good to its word.
I don't know that the federal government's stable enough right now to know what its word is. So yes, I am concerned about what is going to be reimbursed and um, when we have the capacity to pocket the money and save it for, we know what the build out cost is now. Um, we can project potentially for an exacting system. If it's still deemed necessary.
Well, we'll just have to agree to disagree. Uh, investing in, in sustainable practices for the county, for any business, for any home makes a ton of sense if we're just not going to do that with the 40% at worst case, uh, discount. Um, makes very little sense to me, uh, from a financial, um, or a sustainable practices, uh, perspective. But you know how I'll vote on this one.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something?
Certainly, come on up. You'll just tell us your name, please.
Uh, my name's Carson Anons, uh, AKA Ace. Um, I don't know how many of you folks, how many of you folks have solar and wind? I mean, that's what you're.
I have, I have them in every place that I work at, you know.
Okay. I've been on solar and wind for 10 years and, uh, great idea. Love it. But after a 20-year period of the cost of your batteries and the maintenance and this and that, it's about a dead even wash. Uh, and something that people forget here in Wyoming is, uh, December 22nd, what do we got? Four hours of light? And so it's amazing in the summertime. And, uh, but you know, like me personally, you try to run an incubator and all of a sudden you run out of power, you know, so you got to start all over. And, uh, I am Mr., uh, clean energy guy. Love it. But like I said, my personal experience, uh, it's been a wash for me and, uh, now's not the time and the place, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. I'm really sad that Wyoming isn't pursuing, uh, geothermal energy. I mean, it's, uh, we're past due 5,000 years from blowing the top off Yellowstone and the, the whole North American continent, you know, going black and this and that. So, uh, it's there, it's pollution free, there's enough energy there to run the United States for the next 5,000 years. And so here we are talking about solar and wind and, uh, I have guys, every book you can buy about solar and wind. I've built my own, this and that, but like I said, my personal hands-on experience, the expenses that come out of my wallet and not someone else's, when it comes to my wallet, it's a little different. And so I still have it. I have some lights that run on solar on and on. So I, I love it. In, in theory, it's amazing. So, uh, there you got it, guys. That's my two cents.
Thank you very much for your comments.
And just to, yeah, just to push back, not to push back, add to that. Um, I run a clinic in my day job that is 100% solar powered. Um, because of Wyoming's net metering laws, I bank starting in March, the middle of March till the end of October. Um, that offsets the grid usage I have in November and December. So, uh, that, uh, equivocates to, uh, about 20 meds a month are given to us because we have solar power uh, free to the community. Um, this is just a larger approach to that. Um, so just want to, I might agree with you, Ace, on geothermal, but that's not something this county can do. Um, but this is something this county can do. So. So I will move, uh, well, we don't have to move anything.
So here's a question for you. I mean, I need to know what, I guess I should have. So if I tell this guy, no, we're not comfortable putting the 30, if he comes back and says, well, what about 20 or what about 10? How do we feel about that? Just because I know my, how my conversations have gone with this guy. So I don't have to come back and bother you.
What is the economically feasible number for the year and now? Just because it's not my money, it's everybody else's at this, on this day.
I think Leo is probably the person to ask.
Leo would be the person to ask. And he did have a personal thing that came up. I can reach out to him though.
Why don't we just table this?
We can table this.
Until we can get some information, more information.
I can bring it back at the April 20th or May 20th meeting and make sure Leo's here for that. Um, and we can get a few more answers out of Leo and then you guys can let me know the direction you want to go.
So may I have a motion table? You don't need to. Okay, it's only a discussion item. Okay, great. Item 10, discuss request funding for the Laramie Regional Airport. Amy, good morning.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me today. Um, I have a draft budget that I'd like to give to you guys. Am I allowed to do that since I didn't get it to Canada in advance? There's cotton for you this lot. Thank you. Um, today I'd like to ask the county for an investment in the airport of $205,000 for this fiscal year. Um, as you know, we have a joint powers board that oversees the airports and the Albany County Commission and the City of Laramie are, are sponsors on our grants and we do come to you guys for investments in the airport. Um, each entity needs to, per the state statute, each entity needs to put the same amount of money. So the City of Laramie is contributing, um, $205,000 this, this year as well. Um, I will go and present our fee schedule for them in May. Um, but what I wanted to go over this today was kind of our budget and talk to you about what we have going on at the airport. And then some of the interesting things going on, the successes we have at the airport. Um, the budget I have here is of the budget for '25 and then the proposed budget for '26. In here you can see the total income is $3,013,656. That's our anticipated income. It's in the blue on page one. And then if we go into page three, our expenditures are $3,262,457. Leaving us, as you can see in the red, with a shortfall of $248,801. Um, in this budget that we put together, we already have in the city and county funds, assuming that the county is able to um, contribute the $205,000. With our shortfall of $248,810, we are going to put that in our fueling numbers. So our jet fuel numbers, we're going to increase that number on page one, you'll see in the green. We projected it at $104,000, $104 million. We're going to increase that to a hundred and about $1.6 million is where we're going to add that in with the projections that we can get creative and raise some more money for our fueling. Um, some interesting facts about the airport. We have a 2020 economic impact study that the Wyoming Department of Transportation conducted. Currently they're conducting a new one. We should have those numbers in '26. Um, but right now all we have is the 2020 numbers. Um, the Laramie Regional Airport brings in $37.3 million in direct and indirect monies to this county. Um, specifically they bring in, outside of that number, they bring in $1.4 million in tax revenue. Um, so when we're asking for this investment, a total of $410,000 from the city and the county together. Um, for every dollar that is invested, the rate of return is $90.99. So it's a pretty significant rate of return on investment. I assume those numbers have gone up, um, post-COVID. I know we took a little bit of a hit on economic impact and then those numbers have climbed significantly since that time. Um, some successes we've had at the airport this year that we just kind of wanted to talk about so that we could bring it up. And I will make a commitment, I intend to come to the city and the county more this next year and kind of talk about the airport. So you guys can see what we are doing on a regular basis. Um, we had this year, we had in 2024, we had a part, two part 13 complaints go in. I know you guys remember that. We, uh, we came in and talked about it. It's important that we follow up with you as you are sponsors on those grant compliance issues. Um, out of the total of 17 complaints that were written to the FAA, not one of those complaints were found. Um, all of them were, we're doing everything appropriately and within compliance of those grants. Um, we have annually, we have a TSA and Homeland Security inspection. Um, we are in full compliance with the TSA, Homeland Security. Um, annually we get a part 139 inspection. What that is, is that is commercial aviation. Um, we haven't, we have lots of different FAA inspectors, but we have inspectors that come out to just review the safety of the airport, the compliance of part 139 to ensure all of our customers that are traveling in and out of the airport, um, are having a safe and compliant experience. We had two findings this year. We had some placards missing on one of our fuel farm tanks. So we have since replaced those placards. And they asked us that we continue to focus on some snow removal training. Um, so what we did this year was we sent individuals out to Buffalo, New York to ensure that we're using best practices, um, as we're working through winter operations. A fun fact when we talk about winter operations, um, the airport this year, every time the highways closed, we were still able to dispatch flights to and from Denver. So we're moving people in and out of this community through our road closures, um, mainly because we have the de-icing capabilities this year and we're very, we're very good at using that. Um, some fun places where we've created revenue that we did not previously have. Um, in our terminal cost center, SkyWest was paying $1,332 monthly. Um, we worked with our legal team and SkyWest legal team and we have increased that to $6,881 monthly. So the SkyWest is now paying what is industry standard rates. TSA is currently paying $44,000, um, for their lease. When their lease comes up for renewal, we will bring them up to what would be considered for, um, airports, industry standard. So we're looking forward to the terminal cost center actually functioning. We're going to be in the block this year. We're very excited about that. Some things we completed this year is we had the LED airfield lighting project. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to see the lights at night. They're pretty impressive. Um, that was a $1.6 million project, 2% of it, which was a local match for us. Um, that we completed that project. I'm excited to see what the cost savings are this year versus last year. Um, we took delivery of another fire truck this year. Um, I'm, I'm sure you know, but just for circumstance, I'll say we have our own mini fire department. The, the Laramie Fire Department supports us. Um, we have firemen on staff. Um, we received a $1 million truck, 2% of it, which is also airport sponsored. We paid for that. Um, we're excited. We just finished yesterday testing all the plumb and bringing that into circulation. Something interesting on that is there's all kinds of talks about PFOS, which is in fire trucks, which could be a, it could be a hazmat. Um, this truck has the new foam in it. Um, a little bit different training when you're using the new foam versus the old foam. And what we're trying to decide is if we're going to clean our current, our old fire truck and keep it so we have a secondary fire truck or if we're going to sell that truck for someone else to clean it. To clean the fire truck and switch foams, it costs around a hundred thousand dollars. So we're still trying to decide what, what's the most cost effective, uh, measure for that. Over the past four years, so since we've taken, um, since the administration at the airport has changed it over the past four years, we have looked at every single area of revenue at that airport. Um, every single area of revenue has increased what we would consider airport appropriate fees. Um, and places that we did not have revenue, we've created one. For example, facility fees. It used to be free to land at the Laramie Regional Airport. That is no longer the case. If you land at the airport, you have to buy fuel or you have to pay a facility fee. And that is because we're able to provide everybody with a runway, we're able to provide everybody with wildlife mitigation, a fuel farm, all the amenities that folks I think expected a public airport, but there is a cost behind all of that. Um, we continue to review our fuel, which is our number one revenue stream at the airport. Every Monday we look at the prices. We do compare and state. Our goal is never to be the least expensive. It's an expensive operation out there, but we also don't want to be the highest. Um, we have found Laramie is not really a flyover state. It's not somewhere where you just stop and get fuel. Um, Albany County really provides a destination. Um, Carbon County as well. They fly into Albany County because we have the fire department and go into Carbon County. Um, so we want it to be attractive to buy fuel, but we certainly don't want it to be the least expensive. Um, and we have played around with dropping the fuel prices to see if it makes a significant difference. It does not. Um, so some of the things, um, so just so you know, as we move into year four, um, on this new administration, we are dealing with some, um, vehicle and building maintenance issues that have been deferred for numerous, numerous years. Um, we're in year four, so we think we know the majority of things, but a good example is we have that park building out on the highway. Um, that building needs three brand new heaters. They've been neglected for the past 15 years. Um, each heater is $25,000. We're hoping we're at the end of finding things that show up, um, but I don't want to say that we've gotten all of the building maintenance and all the vehicles where they need to be. So we are still desperately, or not desperate, we're still rapidly working on that and trying to get it to a place where, where we know what's coming, what bills to anticipate. Um, some things really important this year that we are partnering with people quickly trying to figure out as revenue streams. Um, the airport is at a place where we've maxed out revenue of what we have right now. So we have to develop other revenue streams, um, to hopefully become sustainable at some point. We are not, we are not on the, the horizon of sustainability. We certainly are looking at how we can get there. Um, we're working with the Capstone Program at the University of Wyoming, um, on developing, we have 65 acres of land that are plumbed for sewage and water. Um, it's time to start putting some infrastructure out there and start creating some revenue streams. So we're working closely with them. Um, I met with the city yesterday. We're going to hopefully work with some of their individuals and hope, and I will probably be back in front of you asking for some support as well as we start to try and develop. Um, we're looking at the sixth, um, penny tax, um, possibly a community hanger in which it would be quick revenue. We have engineers on site that we could do that. So we are looking at all kinds of different opportunities to make some money this year, or it wouldn't be this year, planning to make some money. So we can become sustainable. Um, it's an exciting time at the airport. I feel like, um, everything's calmed down. We're really in a good place. Um, cost of compliance is high, but we're there. Safety is completely there. Um, so I'm excited to say to all of our customers, this is a great time to fly out of our airport. So I'm excited to say to all of our customers, this is a great time to fly out of our airport. And moving forward, we're hoping to work more with the city and county and find other ways of revenue streams. Questions?
How much does it cost you to defend or to process a Part 13 complaint?
It took us 13 months to resolve the Part 13 complaint. The cost of the Part 13's legal fees are very expensive. I'd say probably in total, I may be going low, $20,000 maybe low. It's the hours and hours of taking everything else that needs to be completed and setting it aside. So it's not just the cost of legal fees, which are very expensive. It is also the cost of taking everything that is waiting to be completed and setting it on the back burner to deal with what is a more important issue.
Amy, IT services, I see a line item here. Does that come from the county or do you guys contract that out?
We work with ICC.
ICC.
Yes, we do not work with the county. We had discussed that at the time. It wasn't something the county or the city were able to take on.
You mentioned industry standards and rates. Is everybody at the airport paying menswear rates?
I changed my verbiage to airport standards. Because there really is no industry standard. If you look around, it's hard to find an industry standard. Everybody, so part of the FAA grant assurance is everything is fair and equitable. So if one entity, let's say if somebody's renting a hangar from us, they're paying, they're fair and equitable with the other hangar. If it's a land lease, same thing. They're both paying the same amount.
My final question to you, and I know you might not have any direct ability, but I've heard many people talk about the flight timings as being incredibly disappointing and incredibly difficult to connect. That when the 6:00 AM flight was there, they're more than happy to take that rascal because then they could get to Denver and get to wherever they needed to get. What is the process for getting SkyWest to change that? Because I see the line item here for airline revenue is down $5,000, but I mean, it's not huge, but 5,000 is 5,000.
Absolutely. I can speak specifically to that. That is our number one complaint at the airport, I would say, from the community. The Laramie Regional Airport is the only airport in the state of Wyoming that's an essential air service. We call that an EAS airport. It is a contract where the federal government pays SkyWest to fly into Laramie. So in the contract, it addresses frequency of flights, not times. So we have dealt with SkyWest quite a bit. I believe our 6:00 AM flight is over in Cheyenne right now, to be real honest. They know it's a problem for us. We have called and talked to them about it. What I was given was a glimmer of hope that maybe they would consider putting it back in in December. We are going to pull zip codes, see where the tickets are being bought. I believe you'll see the majority of our community. In fact, I just had a business trip and I flew out of Cheyenne. So you're going to see the majority of, I think the majority of our customers are over supporting Cheyenne as well. So we, we have brought up the concern. We meet with them. I brought the legal team and we've all dealt with it. But based on the contract, it's the 12 round trips a week that the contract guarantees. It does not guarantee flight time. So we have very little input on it, but we do call them about it regularly and discuss it.
Can you, does the airport have the ability to increase landing fees and facility fees after 7:00 AM for commercial carriers? And reduce them at 6:00 AM departures?
We, we do, and we could try and incentivize them. So we've also talked about incentivizing them. So right now, a round trip from Laramie to Denver, if you're not going outside of Denver, if you're just flying, we have a lot of people that fly in and go to concerts or go to the football games. If you're flying round trip to Denver, it's $98. That is your, or excuse me, it's $98 each way. So about $170. We have talked to them about charging more for the 10, or more for the 6:00 AM flight and less for the 10:30 flight. Because if we did that, your business travelers will pay a little bit more. They're avoiding the trip to Denver. They're avoiding the trip to Cheyenne. So we've also talked about the cost structure. I just don't know how serious they are about it right now when we call and talk about it. We have increased all of their fees. So we are trying to figure out the best way to manage that. But I appreciate that and I will bring it up as well.
Are, are the flights that are going out now, are they full? I mean, I've, I've heard overbooking on.
Some of them. Some of them. I will tell you this, last month, our enplanements, enplayment is actually people who get on the plane, maybe not purchase tickets, went down by 50 because they've had a very difficult moment, month when it comes to mechanicals. Not just Laramie, it is system wide. Those planes are having some problems. So they had some mechanicals and then weather has had quite a bit, Denver's had quite a bit of weather. So we were down. I will, I will watch that every month though. We watch every month to see exactly what's going on. So this month was shorter.
This is just a discussion item.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put it, build it into the budget and then it'll get approved.
Okay.
Once budget, anyone's.
Perfect. And then I will work with Kayla and start coming back and presenting these things. I think it's, I, we were, so we were in a different recovery mode. We're at the place now where I'd like to come in and share with you the successes as we have them or some of the challenges we have, just so you know what's going on at the airport. So I'll be in more this year.
And we're not a Teton County or Sweetwater County or Campbell County that actually has a tower in the works where their county can support huge operations and hangar expenses and all that. You're, you're making the most of the hand you were dealt.
And, and I think we're doing very well. I mean, the airport's in a good place. We have employees. One of the things the FAA worries a lot about is consistency of employees, which is very difficult because once you train them, two of our, two of our really good employees, we trained them well and they went, took jobs at DIA. I think we have a really good stat. We have a great team out there right now. They're staying. They're happy with what's going on. When we were cutting the budget, I think I cut too much. So I put a little money back in. That's what helped us with our surplus a little bit going over back into training because I will tell you, the employees we have out there, they, they enjoy what they're doing. They love learning it. And they're all trying to promote themselves and get more qualifications. That was one of the, one of the nicest things the FAA said was they pointed out, it's nice to see the consistency out here. So I think we're on a good path right now.
Well, and if I'm not correct about this, the guy fueling the plane might also be the guy that puts the fire out on the plane.
It is. We're not allowed to do those at the same time.
Yeah. It'd be bad for business. Yeah. But, but that's, that's how you cross train and get the services you have as the same employee does multiple.
Yeah. So not every airport's the same. So when I call around and do salary studies and we're trying to figure out the appropriate, I'll use Cheyenne for example. The National Guard does all of their arc. So all of their firefighting is done through the National Guard. Our individuals are not only compliant on the Part 139, they are also doing the entire firefighting. Some things that we're really lucky right now, we have an MOU with the Laramie Fire Department that our firemen do not have to be EMTs. I think we are the only, the only airport in the state that does not have to have EMTs. If they decide that that doesn't work for the airport and change it, that will take, our budget would take a huge hit because then we have to change that, train them as EMTs, or we have to get into a contract with the Laramie Fire Department. It'd be expensive because we spend probably three hours a day sitting, what we, we call it sitting arc, but standing with the fire truck while flights are coming and going. So we're really in a good place right now. I worry a little bit about change and, and policy changes that come down from DC. Our airport has the exact same compliance requirements as DIA, just on a different budget and a smaller staff. So.
Is it part of the contract with SkyWest to have the arc truck out or standing?
We can stand, we can sit in the hangar with it or we can sit on the flight. We have, the contract is to have a Part 139 operation. You'd have to have fire rescue three minutes from any impact on the field. So we go out and practice. We'll go out and pretend like there is an incident and we'll sit in an intersection, call dispatch, and then we'll watch the truck to make sure it gets there within three minutes. The first year we did it, I called dispatch and they didn't even know we had a fire department. So we've come a long way. We can get there in three minutes. We, we have roll indicators on all the trucks. So it's, we do practice those things.
And you have an incident coming up?
This Tuesday, if anyone's interested, we're doing a mass casualty event with many of our community partners. It'd be fun if anyone wants to come out and watch it. So yeah, we'll, we, we practice that. Every three years, we actually have a mass casualty where we enact it.
Well, for the last 15 years I've been flying out of the airport. Thank you. It's so nice to have a fuel strain when you're 30 below at 31,000 feet. It's so nice to have people able to handle the plane and put it in safely. And your staff is always so courteous. And so I, I've been there when it wasn't there and it's so nice to be working with a professional organization.
Thank you. We pride ourselves on that. We have a really good team out there. So I appreciate the support.
Amy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11. Present for approval, approach license for George Logan and Cindy Sharp on County Road 241 Pumpkin Vine located in Section 35, poundship 13, North Range 72 West. Rob, good morning.
Good morning, ma'am, Chairman and Commissioners. George and Cindy, they've, this property has been in the Logan family for a number of years, agricultural property. They are asking to get a approach for a principal structure that they will later talk to David about. But they wanted to get the approach and stuff started first, so.
Rob, any concerns at all?
No, no, I've looked at it. There's already a two-track there. So they're, they're just.
There's a mini approach.
Yeah, they're improving it for later on if they want to do a principal structure. I think they're talking about maybe building a a shop to start with and then a house later or something.
I move that we approve the approach license for George Logan and Cindy Sharp on County Road 241, Pumpkin Vine located in Section 35, poundship 13, North Range 72 West. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Rob. Item 12 was removed. Item 13, present for consideration Barnhart Zoning District Amendment ZDA-02-25. Joe?
Roy, Commissioners. Yeah, so the applicant and owners are Roy and Tammy Barnhart. Their address is 91 Twin Buttes Vista Drive. Their request is to change the zoning from agricultural to agricultural residential. There were some reviews. Karen Bowman had comments on the subdivision, but no comments on this application. And Holly Dyer, the Laramie Rivers Conservation District, commented on soil degradation and her full comments can be seen in the review section. The applicant has provided a complete application, including all required documentation. The planning department believes that both zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. This property is currently zoned agricultural and a change to ag residential is compatible with existing land use of surrounding properties. The findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed these specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval for the Barnhart's zoning district amendment application, ZDA-0225, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings effect, the conclusion of law as each or stated in the staff report.
Were there any, so they're basically dividing a 40 acre lot out on Wild Horse Ranch?
So this is changing the zoning so that they would be able to do that. Yes.
Now, as I understand it, most of Wild Horse Ranch is 40 acres.
Yeah, it is. And, and their covenants, they can go down to 10 acres.
Okay, so the, the community allows for it.
Yes.
Okay. Is that going to be a huge impact though with everybody that bought 40 acres out there and if we're, are, are the, is the road structure out there and the ancillary access, I'm thinking like Big Hollow Road and stuff behind Hanson Lane? Is that going to be able to handle four times the traffic if everybody gets a wild hair and does this?
James Jackson is online. He might be able to answer that question a little bit better. From our perspective, it will be able to handle it.
We'll deal with it as, if it happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you have any comments, James?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good. Good morning Commissioners. Yeah, my name is James Jackson. I'm a vice president out here at the Wild Horse Ranch. That, the, the question brought up about traffic, no, that wouldn't be an issue whatsoever. Big Hollow is more than capable of handling four times the traffic, but the board would not have the idea of how many people would want to split their 40 acres up into 10 acres. But yes, the covenant does specify that you can divide it into 10 acre parcels, no less than that. And over the last 17 years since the, the deed has been given to the Wild Horse Ranch, only two owners have subdivided their property. I think most people want that 40 acres.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
I would, yeah, sure. I would recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve the Barnhart zoning district amendment, ZDA-0225, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, finding a fact, the conclusion of law as each or stated in the staff report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14, present for consideration amended plat for Summit View Estate subdivision.
Yeah, so this subdivision got approved in February of 2022 and when inspections were done by Jake, it was found that they didn't meet exactly what they were going to do on the plat. So we, you know, told the applicant what they needed to do. And we finally have completed plat and construction drawings for the amended plat.
I thought, I thought I saw Jake.
I did.
Everything's been satisfied to your?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's going to be a pond instead of a culvert? Is that pretty much the gist of it? Okay.
Joe, Jake, maybe you can answer this. Maybe Rob is helpful. It looked like they have a paved approach right now, but it might be going to gravel or maybe it's gravel right now into a cattle guard. Is that difficult in, in maintenance? As you get gravel moving away to the side and, and you know, bumps and divots in front of the cattle guard and then who's responsible for that?
Maybe Rob can answer this better, but the whiteout approach or the approach between the cattle guard and the highway is wide. So whiteouts in charge of maintaining that, the cattle guards be going to be widened. And then as it comes into the road, you know, you do get, as everybody knows, after a cattle guard or when you transition from a hard surface to a gravel surface, it starts to increase the potholing and the washboarding and it's just, that's the way it is. So it has to be maintained. Is that a county road that has to be maintained?
It's private.
It's private. So it's, it will be the responsibility of the District Owners Association.
Is it through a district up there?
I don't even remember, to be honest.
Rainbow Valley?
Yeah.
It's in the road.
David's saying yes.
Okay. So they would be responsible for maintaining that.
Super. Thank you. I just want to make sure the county wasn't involved in maintaining that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I guess, so in some of the documentation, you requested a new Mylar?
Yes.
Is that an overlay? Is it just digital now?
We'll need a Mylar to report at the clerks.
Okay. I was curious. I only know one type of Mylar, so that was.
Balloons?
It's a, yeah, material.
Okay. May I have a motion? There's no more questions?
I move that we recommend or approve the amendment, the amended plat for some of the US states subdivision and including the staff report and recommendations. I know.
There is any on this one?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 15, present for consideration amendments to Chapter 5 of the Albany County Zoning Resolution.
Hey, ma'am, Chair, Commissioners. So what this is, we're requesting approval of amendments to the zoning resolution, Chapter 5. So this chapter is where our zoning certificates and conditional uses are kind of the permit processes and those types of things. What you're going to, or what you're seeing is a few amendments. So the amendments to Chapter, Section 4 adds a standard for all site plans associated with zoning certificates and conditional use applications. So basically we're just spelling out what's supposed to be in the site plan. All of this is currently in our, are on our applications. We're putting much of what's on there into, into our regulations. So it's all just consistent and, and we have somewhere a point. The one addition to the current procedure is requirement that a site plan be prepared and stamped by a professional surveyor for lots of two acres or less. The reasoning behind that is we have sometimes problems with where people build their structures too close to the property lines or across property lines. This will Too close to the property lines or across property lines. This will help, um, for folks to. You know, get something that's a little bit of better standard, um, their site plan so that. They know where they're, they're building and they can, uh, make sure that they're not encroaching upon setbacks or other people's properties. Um, it's also amended section six to include contents of the zoning certificate application and defines standards for building plans. Um, this section establishes a time limit for approval as well. Um, and then section seven, standards for conditional use applications to include how reviewers comment. Maybe applied to the application and amends required findings, including addition of wildlife habitat. Um, also the expiration was changed from one year to two years to be consistent with what we're doing with our zoning certificate application. Um, just our regular zoning certificates. Um, you know, in essence, what we're trying to do here is to. Clear up our regulations, make them. So that people can understand what they're doing. And when we receive information, we're receiving the information that we need. To make sure that they're compliant with, with all the regulations. Um, and also for applicants to know what they're applying for. And, you know, this is what they can do. You're, you're applying for this, this is what you can do. So in the future, they don't go down the road and, and make changes, which is a problem now. Well, they'll turn in an accessory, accessory building. And then we will get notified that they also have a, a, an apartment in there, which is not complying with our rules without. Some additional processes. So, um, we're really just trying to clean these, these things up. Um. And, you know, as for the aqua protection area, that was, that was, this was brought up. There's, there's nothing in here that's changing in the aqua protection area. This will be a general amendment for everywhere. And all this is, is how we're, we're. What information we're requiring in our applications, um, so that we can make sure that people are doing what they say they're doing. And also it'll be easier for us to enforce in the future because we'll have more information, additional, additional, um. You know, benefit of, of what we're doing here is we will have additional information for future land, landowners or homeowners that could come in. Say, oh, yeah, do you have this? Yes, we do. We do have the building plans. We do have the site plan that's right here. Um. So we feel like it'd be a benefit for the general public as well, so. Um, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Oh, okay.
Great.
No, it's, it's not that bad. I, I understand the essence of what you're trying to do. Um, I just, there's, there's still a bit of. Gray area on some of this where there's a recommendation. It, it's that it is recommended that an applicant for a small water permit accompany the zoning certificate application. But is it required? Is that just language so that? And a recommendation occurs?
Yeah, I, I mean, this is basically what we do on our application. We're recommending if you're gonna put a house in. You should turn in your, your application for your septic at the same time, but we're not requiring that. Um, and, and the reason behind that is, is at least get it in front of people because we don't want people on a, you know. Maybe there's a one-acre lot out there that, that's been created previously. Um, and they come in and they put their house somewhere and then they come in to put their septic. And it's gonna be really hard to cite that septic because of where they put their house. So it's just to, to help people get the, the big picture. Before they come in and, and apply for something.
And then this still also has the two separate hearings, one for zoning and planning and one for the Commissioners. Um, so it's like line one twenty-six. I had a hard time with this because I tried, I tried to read through all the. Language prior to the final product.
Sure.
Um. But we're still gonna maintain. Shall hold a public hearing on the application and make, okay. I may have answered my own question. This was late last night.
Yeah. So the language we discussed before, I don't think that's in here, so.
Okay. And then there was also, there's quite a bit of reference to significant adverse impact, either economic. Um. Natural separation nuisance. Um. How's that gonna be determined? Does that come before this board to determine what a nuisance is gonna be and in what regard? Or do we need to change the language to address that so that there's no ambiguity?
Right, um.
It's, it's in there a couple times.
Yeah.
Economic impact, um.
Sure. So, so in, in that situation. You know, for environmental impacts or, you know, wildlife habitat. I think that's where it says it. We're, we're studying these, these applications out to others to provide us information. And based on what they provide us, then we can make that determination. Um, but, yeah. That, that's language that was kind of discussed in planning zoning and this is, that's kind of what got.
Okay.
Put in here. And I think we can, we can deal with that.
Okay, and then the, the, the additional notices, it looks like you have to notify. Landowners, planning and zoning. Has to notify landowners and then the Board of Commissioners also has to provide notice for proposed legislative zoning and district amendments. I'm assuming this is what Mr. Edwards was. Discussing in how people are contacted.
Uh, where, where are we at?
All notice requirements, uh, this is in the final language, uh, section four. Uh. See subsection B. Internotice requirements, additional notices. So are we. Overly, I guess my concern would be if everybody's having to provide notices at three separate levels, are we overburdening? I wanna say. The homeowner or the developer with having to try to notify. At various levels and then the county also assumes responsibility for some of those notifications.
So, so the way we do notices typically is, um. So let me just walk you through our process. Somebody comes into our office and wants to do a conditional use permit. Uh, that's gonna require notices and, and such. We get the permit, we start processing that. We send them the notice that has to be, they have to send up, um, through the mail. Which is the same notice that we're going to publish in the newspaper. Um, and what we typically do is we. We put in there, this is the date of planning and zoning commission, and this is the date of the Board of County Commissioners meeting. So.
So it's got hearing date?
Yes, so, so it's one time.
Three.
Yeah, unless, unless something happens at planning zoning, it gets tabled or something. And then we'll have to send out another notice, but we typically do it at one, one time.
I just wasn't sure with this language whether that would, whether somebody could construe that to mean we need three separate notices.
Yeah.
For each action.
Yeah, as long as we, yeah, have all the information that what we send out, we should be good.
And then I just have one more question. Somebody's gonna have to explain to me the adjudicative zoning district amendment. Um. Because it does say it creates a quasi-jurisdictional amendment. And is that, I, I guess Mr. Ayers could speak to this. Um, is that just a broader scope for changing particulars? Uh, for like land use or. Does this more or less clean up language? Allow for less individuals to be contacted and just create a category?
So, uh, Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Hoff, that is a separate set of amendments.
Okay.
So.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm running on my notes here.
Yeah, this is a zoning certificate, conditional use requirement, um, and site plans required for those applications.
Oh, because this is, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's.
My bad.
Uh. Any other questions for Mayor?
Nope.
All right.
Well, I move that we approve the amendments to chapter five of the Albany County zoning resolution.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item.
Sixty.
Sixteen, present for consideration amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution. Zoning district amendment process. David?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, um. So this is taking our current zoning district method process. And creating kind of a separate process, um, for the general amendments. Um, really what we're doing here is we, we've got the, the process for. For somebody that's got one or two properties, um, that includes all of the notices to all the property owners and, and those types of things. Um, which is a little bit more stringent, we, um, when, when, when it comes to the notice requirements. Um, and we're, we're splitting out, we're creating, we're really just creating. We're taking what the Administrative Procedures Act says, um, and what we currently use when we do. Broad amendments to zoning maps and, and such is, is we're putting that into our regulations. Our regulations, um, you know, if, if, if it doesn't go in there, we're still gonna use the same process. I mean. But, but this process is a little bit more specific. Um, and we do pro- provide a provision in there to go above and beyond, um, what is usually required for. The legislative process, which is forty-five days' notice before the board and, and then you go for it, right? Um, we've added a provision in there to, for the board and, and the planning zoning commission to, to do additionally if, if we want to, so. Um, we can put it in, and which we, we try to do, put it in social media, um. You know, just, just try to get the information out to people better than, than what is, is currently required in the statutes. Um, and so we, we put that in there, kind of codifying that, that, um, that requirement. So it does go above and beyond that. If, if we did wanna send letters to every person that this is going to affect, we could do that. I mean, that, that. There's nothing that precludes us from doing that. Um, even, so planning and zoning, um, when we, we updated the. Aqua protection overlay zone and anybody that was affected by that boundary. Received a letter from our office. That was something planning zoning asked us to do, so we did that. Um, so with all that, I'll, I'll just kind of cruise through what, what, what the summary is here. Uh, we. We named and amended the existing zoning district amendment process to be done as adjudicative zoning district amendment, which is. We'll probably have a question about that. Um, and then we added a general zoning district amendment process known as the legislative. Zoning district amendment for amendments that include large areas of the county based upon county, uh, land use policies such as amended overlay zone. Or changes affecting zoning throughout the county, um, updated the notice requirements for each process, amended the. Criteria for approval, adjudicative, um, zoning district amendment, um, and updated the aqua protection overlay zone. Regulations to be consistent with the proposed amendments, making existing processes clear. Um, and generally refined, refined for clearer and more concise language. When it comes to the aqua protection overlay zone, we're just trying to keep everything consistent. And so the changes to that are to keep. What we do in the different, for our different permits, all consistent. Um, the aqua protection overlay zone for adjudicative prop, um, process. The only difference would be is we already have some criteria in there which we left, um, that are in addition. Um, to that process. And so, so the only thing that were really changes is the process of how we're moving these things forward. Um, obviously, um, we had some comments on this, um. And, you know, if, if the biggest, the biggest issue is, is the, you know, how we're notifying surrounding property owners. Uh, you know, that's, that's an option that we have because we've put that into our regulations now. And that goes above and beyond what is required by, by the state, the state and the Administrative Procedures Act.
This is a, we may, not we shall type?
Yeah, it's not a requirement. Like, we didn't, we didn't say. Like, I think the language is, is, um, planning zoning commissioner, the Board of County Commissioners. May require additional things, but you know, additional ways of notifying the public.
So, um, your office shall, but above and beyond is, I, I, I'm just worried about burdening anyone looking for an application change or a zoning change. Having to contact and exorbitant amounts.
It will be what we do, yes, correct. Yeah, and, and, you know, if we're making a, a change to it. Where that's really going to apply, um, would be like the general amendments too. Um, like, we, we adopt a new comprehensive plan and now we're adopting all new zoning. Um, that would be a choice. Do we wanna notify the thousands or, you know. If, if that's what we wanna do, we'll, we'll send them a letter. Um, but that'll come down to.
A choice here or not.
Yes, a force. Correct. Yeah, so I might be happy to answer your questions and honestly, Matt's here to answer questions as well, so.
No, this makes more sense that it's on this one. I just jumped my notes, I apologize.
Yeah.
And, and this, the state doesn't require, we're going above and beyond what the state would require as far as noticing goes.
Yeah.
So. Thanks. Not any ideas about just cleaning up the language, making our process go with our regulation? Is that. Essentially the, the takeaway from this process and maybe the other processes, uh, that we're talking about today?
Um.
I guess better question answers, what was your guiding principle as you started to go through these to, to propose these amendments? What was your thoughts?
Oh, um. Well, I mean, this was, you know, something that was directed for me to do. Um, but essentially it was. Ensuring that everything meets the, uh, statute or the required number of standards. Um, and sort of defining. I guess how the planning department has been, been viewing, um, these changes. Uh, you know, because there's the, the adjudicative, I guess, to your question a little bit, Commissioner Hoff, is. When you're dealing with a single or, you know, maybe one or two or three parcels. And you have a set criteria of what it takes in order to, um, I guess, grant that zoning district amendment. Uh, you are acting in a quasi judiciary or adjudicative capacity. Because you're applying facts, which is the application, to a set of criteria, um, in order to act on that application. But when, uh, counties or county commissioners are. Just creating, you know, new zoning districts, um, doing large swaths of rezoning. Such as the implementation of a comprehensive plan or land use plan, um, there isn't that set standard. Uh, it is acting more in a legislative capacity, so. This was, um, I guess to make that distinction clear in the zoning resolution.
Thank you.
All right, I move that we approve the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution zoning district amendment process.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Item seventeen, present for consideration amendments to the Albany County design. And construction standards for small wastewater facilities and regulations to permit. To construct, install, or modify wastewater facilities. David?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, so our, we're, just to, to give you a little background and, and kind of what we're doing is. We're, we're in the process, um, he says, working on, you know, a major update of our small wastewater regulations. Um. We've had these and I don't think they've been amended, or they've been amended since like two thousand and seven. Um, other than I think we did make an amendment for, for the aqua protection overlay stuff, so that was, that was, that was recent, but. Um, we're doing a, a broad brush, looking, looking at everything and, and going to make sure they're consistent with chapter twenty-five. And, and what we need to be doing. Um, so there's just a few things in here that we're requesting today. Um, to amend, just to, just to make sure that our application and, and the standards and our regulations are, are matching. Um, and, and they're also following with what chapter twenty-five says. So we're asking to, to make. Make these few amendments to amend the design flow number for single family dwellings. Um, to meet the Wyoming Department of Rural Quality minimum. Um, and then amending the leach field design standards to, um, WDQ's minimums and then also to. Amend the percolation test, um, procedures to conform with those standards as well. Um, they're pretty much just taken straight from the state's rules, um, and we're just making these few changes today, but. With that, we will be bringing more changes to clarify. But with that, we will be bringing more changes to clarify our rules and make sure that they're up to, up to the right standard. And aren't citing that somebody from the city is supposed to be looking at our regulations. So, yeah, there's all sorts of kind of crazy stuff that's in there. So.
So on the perk test, what did you have to change from five years ago? I didn't notice, I didn't, didn't actually jump out at me as I read this.
Uh, that would be, that's a good question. I, I mean, Lisa just took their, um, there's the standards right out of. Chapter twenty-five and put them in ours.
I just noticed.
I'm not sure what the differences.
Okay, because I know there were some measurement differences and that kind of thing. Um, and having done this personally myself. This doesn't seem overly burdensome for anybody installing themselves or contracting.
Right.
But, okay. And David, these are WDQ standards, right?
Yes.
Those, we can't say those are over burdensome anyway.
Right.
We're not going to do that, right?
Yeah, those are cutting paste.
Yes, it actually looks like there's some deletions that are beneficial. Well, I move that we, uh, approve the amendments to Albany County Design and Construction Standards for Small Wastewater Facilities and Regulations. For permit, construct, install, or modify small wastewater facilities. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, present for approval, first amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Commissioners. Of the County of Albany, Wyoming by and through the Albany County Sheriff's Office and the University of Wyoming Athletics Department. For county sheriffs, oh, for law enforcement services. Do I need to read that again since I goofed it up? Share it some. There you are, way down there. Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. Yes, this is just an extension for one year of the MOU agreement. That we have with the University of Wyoming Athletics Department for Law Enforcement Services. For the men's football season and men's basketball season, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. In the original MOU, there was a, um, a carve-out in there that said if we wanted to extend that. For an additional year, both parties can just agree to it electronically. I've reached out to UW Athletics and they've agreed to extend that contract. And so the amendment that you have, uh, in front of you is a reflection of that.
I move that we approve the first amendment to the MOU between the Board of Commissioners, the County of Albany, Wyoming. By and through the Albany County Sheriff's Office and the University of Wyoming Athletics Department for Law Enforcement Services as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item nineteen, present for approval, application to the Wyoming Department of Transportation. For National Highway Safety Administration Funds to fund the Albany County Sheriff's Department in overtime enforcement. Of impaired driving and occupant protection, high visibility for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, commissioners. Uh, we received a letter invite to participate in a high visibility enforcement grant. For DUI enforcement and for seatbelt enforcement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation. Um, the letter that you have in front of you, um, should show the funds available to the Albany County Sheriff's Office. Uh, we agreed to go through, uh, I believe it's approximately nineteen thousand dollars for DUI enforcement. And then approximately a little over three thousand dollars for the high visibility seatbelt enforcement. Um, and we are, we are asking the commissioners to, uh, to approve this so that we could move forward with the process. And receive, receive those funds.
I have nothing. I move that we approve the application with Wyoming Department of Transportation for National Traffic. Highway Traffic Safety Administration Fund to fund the Albany County Sheriff's Office. Uh, Department in Overtime Enforcement of Impaired Driving and Occupant Protection High Visibility for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty, present for approval, renewal of organizational use license. With University of Wyoming Trademark and Licensing. Sheriff.
Good, yes, commissioners. Uh, the contract that I have with the University of Wyoming Licensing and Trademark. Um, expires, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. What you have in front of you, um, is them reaching out for us to renew that contract for another two years. There's no, no cost, uh, associated with that contract. It just allows us to use. Um, uh, the bucking horse and steamboat for, um. Logos licensing, um, that we utilize here within the sheriff's office. So.
I move that we approve the renewal of the organization, organizational use license with the University of Wyoming Trademark and License. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-one, discuss and approve allocation of remaining fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Albany County Recreation Board funding in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Bailey.
My commissioners, so this would be funding from two years ago from the REC Board. So what happened with, um, fairgrounds went to do, I believe, the washing stations for pig and sheep. Um, those, the, the quotes they got, or unfortunately with grants, things are like a year behind. So they got a quote, they went for the application, they got the funds that matched the quote, and then prices went up. So, reached out with Taylor, she did a couple other smaller projects at the fairgrounds. Um, but there's still fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. And then we had rifle range actually come in under budget that same year, um, with two hundred and ninety-one dollars still remaining. So that does total the seventeen number that's on your agenda. After talking with the REC Board multiple times on what we need to be doing with this money. Um, I finally got an answer out of them at the last meeting that it is up to the county to decide how we want to redistribute those funds. One thing they did say is that we do need to distribute them to a project that is already approved by REC Board. My recommendation for you today is after the REC Board meeting at the beginning of April or middle of April. They did approve the FY twenty-six. Um. Majority of the projects did get fully funded. Uh, the county projects got fully funded except for common outdoor ground. They were very, there are specific items that they did not approve, that they did not feel was appropriate. Um, and they did not fund anything towards the roof replacement at the fairgrounds. And then they did not fully fund. Uh, they did not fund a YO Elite Storm at all, and then they did not fully fund the Pilot Hill project. The request was a hundred thousand dollars, they only funded forty-six thousand, five hundred. My recommendation, just to make it easier and to not have this money just sitting here, is to put it towards Pilot Hill. Because it is an approved project that was not fully funded. But I would like to hear what you guys would like me to do with this.
I like the plan.
Okay.
Well, I like Pilot Hill, but so, um. Did the fairgrounds come up with some other sort of funding for their roof?
I have not talked to Taylor. I actually had just sent her an email about a completely other project. Um. But she said no, that she doesn't have another idea right now. She's working on it. Okay. Infrastructure grant funding period is hard to find. It just is. So I don't know. And my thought too was seventeen thousand, it wasn't an approved project by REC Board. So, um, we, yeah, the county technically can't give them that money to do the roof. So.
And we'll get Pilot Hill a little farther down the road in their project there.
Thought.
So that's for the parking lot.
The, the, yeah, that, um, that trailhead project.
Okay.
I don't have any comment.
You have a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, allocation of the remaining fiscal year twenty twenty-four Albany County Recreation Board. Funding in the amount of seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, seventy-three cents for the Pilot Hill project as presented.
A second.
No, you don't.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And, Nay, for Commissioner Hoff. Um, item twenty. Item twenty-two, ratify amendment. Station for Clean Electricity Low Income Communities Bonus Credit Amount Program. For the Courthouse and IT Building Solar. Bailey.
So I got a notification, so, um, this is for the Courthouse and the IT project, um, solar project. Um, we had, um, Cherry sign a letter a couple of months ago. I submitted that. They didn't like that letter. They wanted additional language added in. Jennifer did add that additional language in, and that's just all this is. So I resubmitted it because they needed it by yesterday.
Okay. You have a motion?
I move we ratify the amended data, data station for the Clean Electricity Low Income Community Bonus Credit Amount Program. For the Courthouse and the IT Building Solar Project. Second.
All those, oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-three, present for approval, budget allocation for the Wyoming Department of Agriculture. Twenty twenty-five Wyoming Energy Insect Management Grant in the amount of eighty-five thousand. Bailey.
So I was on the call last week and we got our official letter, uh, the county's getting eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, for this program, which is thirteen thousand more than last year. Um, so we are excited about that. Um, what I did put in your pocket was my recommendation for allocations to the districts. Uh, because we still weren't fully funded, um, we do still have to cut in certain areas. One of the things that we have done in the past are, um, that I came before you, I believe, last summer or fall. Um, was adding in that indirect at ten percent. Um, so any application we apply for is at ten, ten percent indirect cost. That's just the application. So when I, um, put this spreadsheet together for you guys that you do have in front of you. Um, I took a, the base cut, or I took, um, I took the difference of what was. The twenty twenty-four was actually worth, um, and then what the request was, did a nice. Equations that Excel lets me do. Um, however, then our indirect cost was still sitting at, um, four thousand. Which I do feel is a little high for this, um, grant. It isn't all that much work for us, but it is some work for us. Um, so what I, my recommendation is we cut the indirect cost piece to fifteen hundred dollars. And then we can allocate more to those districts, um, for that mosquito health treatment help. If you like that, we can approve that. If you don't like that, you guys can tell me what you want. The other thing we do, um. Usually do in the past is we've always had a match for it. The grant requires a match and the districts do come up with some on their own match. But the county has, in the past, has just always helped them up a bit, off, helped them a little bit. Last year, we did help them with thirty percent of what they were, or what they were awarded. I did knock that down to fifteen percent this year. The only reason for that is because if you combine then what the county would give and what they get from the grant. They're getting close to what they're asked for the grant was. Um, so I felt that was very fair. And I know the, the county, we are going into budget cuts, um, but I don't want to cut this program out completely. It is still something that, you know, we kept on that meeting. Um, more match in the future. Um, so I thought it seemed fair, but if not, just let me know. And we do have to, from our match, we do have to pay the city, um, for their monitoring. Uh, because they do our monitoring service that is required by the grant.
I move that we approve the budget for the Wyoming Department of Agriculture twenty twenty-five Wyoming Emergency Insect Management Grant. In the amount of eighty-five thousand as presented in Bailey's budget and allocated as presented. Okay. Allocated as presented.
Marnie, great.
I am, second.
All, all, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Present for approval, receipt and distribution of the final US Forest Service revert, revert, reserve funds. Based on the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of two thousand. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and forty-seven cents. After sequestration for Title One, which includes distribution for road schools pursuant to Wyoming Statute. Nine dash four dash four oh five, four, five oh one. And which does not include funding for Title Three.
Good morning again, commissioners. Um, the guidance we received with the, the documentation from the Wyoming. Um, State Treasurer's Office says Secure Rural School Act has expired and was not re- reauthorized. Payments this year are distributed under the nineteen oh eight Act as amended legislation. The nineteen oh eight Act distributes the average of twenty-five percent of seven fiscal years of receipts. From each national forest shall be paid to the state or territory in which the forest is situated. To be expended for the benefit of public schools and public roads of the county or counties in which the forest is situated. Under the Act, um, Title One, Two, and Three does not exist. And a hundred percent of the funds are for roads and schools. Each state decides for themselves on the percentage breakdown between their public roads and schools. So before you today is the final payment we will receive for this. Um, some notable, notable things I want to point out are I, I have it distributed as Title One because that is how. That is schools and public roads. Um, the road portion would be eighty-five percent, which is eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. This current fiscal year, we had budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand. That'll be a shortfall in this budget. Of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Um, the Title Three that we received last year was, uh, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And we had split that between fire warden and the sheriff's office for search and rescue operations. Which that means that both those, um, departments and offices would be down eleven thousand, eight ninety-three. Sixty-eight each. Um, going forward in the next year's budget, we already have this calculated at zero since one. Insert sad face here. That's all I. Any questions that I can?
So are they planning, I guess, to remove that act, right? Nineteen oh eight, is that?
I.
Because it seems like they have to do this, if that is still in place. Yeah, you're guessing as good as anybody else is. All right. Well, I move that we approve the receipt and distribution of the final US Forest Service Reserve Funds. Based on Secure Rural Schools and Communities Self-Determination Act of two thousand for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. In the amount of ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Tracy.
I feel like you really want to say no, thank you.
Trying to be happy and positive here. Uh, present for approval engagement letter from Carver Florrick and James CPA for the twenty twenty-five audit.
Good morning again. It seems like we just finished our audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which I think we, well, we did at the end of December. However, um, this will get us started in the new year. They do want to start working. They want us to, um, upload. Um, everything through March thirty-first to the portal so they can do some preliminary work. Which actually is great because that helps us to, um. Get some, some of the work already done and then in the fall is a little less work.
Is it going to be more challenging with the new system?
Um, it's going to be, yeah, I don't know.
Concise, yeah.
On, on, on the happy side or the, I don't know, on one side of it, that old system is what we were using up until March thirty-first is where, where they want. Um, some of the things that we have imported into the new system, we corrected in the new system thinking, we don't ever need the old system again. So we're still kind of reconciling some of those corrections. Um, I have made that disclaimer to the auditors. They know we're switching the system to, it was at their, um. Request. Um, that we get a new system.
Strong suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's another reason they probably want to get a start on this now as well to help. Hope can find these issues.
So Tracy, when the, well, the new system is fully implemented, is it your hope that it will be easier to do the audit?
It will be easier. Um. We, I mean, there's a couple of ways of looking at things, the, the system itself has the ability to create an accurate annual comprehensive financial report. I holler at people for using acronyms all the time, and there I just did it myself. So that means that's less work for them to do because they're having to take the numbers that we have for them in our, from our system and compile them into the financial for the thingy, but this will, the system should do that. We can also create them like a view-only access to our software, and that would mean. Nobody has to sit there and pull a hundred vouchers to review. All that documentation is going to be already housed in our software, and they should be able to just look at it right there.
Super.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds, that's a good thing.
Yeah, there's some good things.
I move we approve the engagement letter for Carver, Florrick, and James CPA for the twenty twenty-five audit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-six, present for approval wildland. Fire management operation plan pursuant to the current master cooperative. Wildland Fire Management and Stafford Act Response Agreement and Interagency Agreement.
Commissioner, it's not as fancy as all that, but.
It's a lot of paper.
Lot of tongue-twisting kind of.
This is our internal operating plan. It's called an annual plan, but it didn't come before you last year because it's such a static and established plan that last year's review determined that. It didn't have to go out for signature during the twenty twenty-four season, so. This is a reapproval from twenty twenty-three, and big changes afoot, we have added Wheatland Fire. To the signatory sheet, that is quite honestly the biggest change to this agreement over the past several years, so. Static and unchanged, but it, this is the plan that in Wyoming, we're all hands on land. This gives. All suppression agencies. Authority to act. So if there's a fire on a property and a forest service truck pulls up, they can fight that fire. We can as well, or any other signatory to this agreement, so we don't have to worry about where the fence is, where the property line is, we have authority to act and suppress those fires. Gives us the sideboards of the types of things we need to do to be in compliance with federal agencies and things like that. My, I anticipate that this is last year that this will be simple, federal government is going to, there's big changes afoot at the federal level, as with many things. And we may see a new agreement in the next year, year or two, that would, that would change some of these things significantly with this. Likely that would involve the, the separation of the fire suppression agencies from the land management agencies. From the Forest Service and the BLA. Being consolidated under a federal fire suppression agency as opposed to Forest Service or BLA.
Really?
Yeah. That's, that's where we're going in this country, so this agreement. Necessary and big changes to the science of the agreement.
That's going to be interesting.
Those are big changes, we'll see how that all comes about.
So our vote just satisfies the Albany County portion, the, the fire district still has to vote on this as.
Yeah, and they did at their last meeting, and so all, all the agencies have to approve this plan, and that's, it's a time-consuming thing, so last year, that's why we. Went to this activity because there, there were essentially no changes even to the, the signatures at that time, there weren't a lot of changes, so this year there are some changes to the signatures. Warrants coming up from you. It's a great plan, it works well, and hopefully it doesn't. Apple Card doesn't get upset too much in the next couple of years. Things happen.
Everybody's played nice so far.
Unbelievably so, I, I think it's not universal that. County and state agencies have a relationship with the federal agencies that we have here, we have a credible relationship with the federal partners. Very rarely committed any sort of conflict with suppression activities, works out very, very well.
Thank you, I move that we approve. The wildfire management operating plan pursuant to the current master cooperative wildland fire management and Stafford Act Response Agreement and Interagency Agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you very much, Jen. Item twenty-seven, present for approval application for catering permit for Roxy's on Grand. For the Firearms Research Center Dinner held at the Hanson Arena Mary Mead Room located at four seventy highway. Two thirty Laramie, Wyoming on June fifth, twenty twenty-five from five PM to nine thirty PM. Bailey, I'm not fairly.
Yes, almost.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is an application for catering permit. Because Roxy's holds their liquor license within city limits, the city council has at their meeting tonight to approve them to use their liquor license outside of their jurisdiction. So we'll get that letter from the city clerk after their meeting, most likely tomorrow, but everything else meets all the requirements and it's all good to go.
Move we approve the application for catering permit as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, make appointment to the Albany County Transportation Authority.
Chair, move we appoint David Gerch to the Albany County Transportation Authority.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And Carrie, just to make note, it's a three-year term to expire in May of twenty twenty-eight, I got this first.
Congratulations, David.
Three-year term to expire in.
May of twenty twenty-eight.
May, May of twenty twenty-eight, thank you, congratulations, David. Okay, item twenty-nine, award the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Commissioner Initial Scholarships.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move that we approve Addison Fowler and Ebony Seibert. As the County Commissioner's Scholars Recipient, Scholarship recipients for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item thirty, discuss the Railtie Run Project for Mitch Conservs.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So you've all been received and have heard previously from. The clients that Mitch Edwards represents, you've received letters from Mark Stewart regarding his clients and their concerns regarding the Railtie Run Project. We reached out to Repsol, asked them to come in and speak to those concerns on their behalf. So that you guys have a full picture and so that we in our office can then start going through and assessing. In conjunction with David, where we are, what needs done, and then can come back to you and give you a report of that, and today, Henry Waltag from Repsol. Yeah, I believe is here to speak with us. Come on up, so he can present from his concern, also Mitch Edwards and his clients are here and Mark Stewart are here as well. And would also like the opportunity to speak.
Yes, I have a brief presentation, I printed off a few copies, I'll ask them to round. Thank you. Okay, first off, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you today. My name is Henry Waltag, I am Director of Development for the Western Region at Repsol. And while I've been with Connect Gen Repsol for going on seven years, relatively recent to the Railtie project, last four or five months or so, so. I have enough information to be dangerous, but if I don't have an answer today, I definitely will make sure to follow up. So I'm here today to provide an update on the status of the project, and as Jennifer mentioned, address a few questions that the county has received. From members of the project. First off, just a really quick refresher for those of you who aren't as familiar with the project, this is a five hundred and four megawatt wind project. Located fifteen miles south of, as the crow flies, from where we're sitting and standing today. It's sited on approximately twenty-six thousand acres, eighty percent of which is private land, twenty percent of which is Wyoming state lands. And the project interconnects to WAPA's existing Alta Craig three hundred and forty-five kilovolt transmission line. The project completed the Albany County, Wyoming Industrial Siting Council and NIPA permitting process over the course of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And currently we are in final stages of negotiating power sale contracts with multiple local uptakeers. And I'd like to emphasize that this power will not be shipped off to California or other western states.
Who are those stakeholders?
I cannot mention right now because the contracts are not finalized, but as soon as they are. That will be made public. And rather, those, those three entities are local within this region. Next slide, I'd like to speak to the start of construction and the activities that occurred. Heard late last year through today. Of course, all permit conditions required at this stage from Albany County and the ISC have been met. And the project remains in compliance with those permit conditions. We contracted with Oftetall, a licensed Wyoming contractor to perform the work in addition to Tetra Tech. An engineering and environmental firm to perform routine inspections, particularly related to the SWIP. Construction activity started in December of last year, and it included installing two point three miles of access roads. And excavating ten turbine foundations. Overwinter activities, of course, we had to break. But those include SWIP management and routine inspections. And anticipated spring activities, once the weather allows, additional soil stabilization from excavated materials. Drainage improvements and road maintenance. And as far as next steps for the project, project goes writ large, some subject to a number of variables, construction is likely to continue later this year. Next slide here. I wanted to speak to one issue in particular, that I know has been raised recently, and that's regarding the Aircraft Lighting Detection Systems, or ADLS. What you see here is a map, which is a snippet of the package that's submitted to the FAA. I can ensure to you Commissioners and the public that we've complied with Albany County WEX permit conditions. In twenty twenty-two, we filed the project's turbine locations with the FAA, and we received determinations of no hazard for all of those filings. After those determinations were received, we received an ADLS, or we submitted an ADLS application for the project to the FAA, and that was subsequently approved. This project has had approval from the FAA for an ADLS, and we are in compliance with the county's requirement. The fact that we update turbine locations and filings with the FAA is typical in our line of work. It is standard industry practice to file with the FAA upfront, early in the process, to confirm that this is a viable area for something like aircraft lighting detection. As we advance pre-construction field surveys and project design, we make iterations, minor iterations of those turbine locations. And we resubmit those to the FAA for updated approvals, and at this point in the process, we have submitted an updated ADLS package to the FAA. And we anticipate approval in short order, much like we received in twenty twenty-three. The next slide, so we, of course, we remain committed to community engagement that has been ongoing really since twenty eighteen. Over the course of the last seven years, we've conducted countless numbers of in-person meetings with stakeholders, landowners, members of the public, members of the local business community. And over the course of that time, we've given sixty thousand dollars in donations and to support various events, nonprofits, and organizations in Albany County. Those events, organizations are such as the Laramie Jubilee Days, the Wyoming Stock Growers Association, United Way of Albany County. And scholarships to Laramie High School students, and we look forward to continuing with some of those endeavors this year. In addition to the local giving, the project has over seven hundred thousand dollars in additional contributions. And mitigation payments planned for the coming years. These include three hundred and fifty thousand to the Wyoming State Parks, two hundred and fifty thousand to the Wyoming State Museum. And a hundred and seventy-five thousand to the Laramie Public Artists Coalition. And on the last slide, just real quick, these economic benefits were updated in twenty twenty-four with revised project estimations. The project would generate almost thirty-five million dollars in taxes during construction, that's the construction period alone. A little more than half of that would go directly to Albany County, and during the operational years. There would be a steady stream of annual tax revenues averaging five point one million in total. And the county's portion of that would be about eighty percent, four point one million of those annual dollars. Not listed here, but equally important is the tens of millions of dollars that we will be paying to the project's private landowners. Who are looking to exercise their private property rights and to diversify their income streams. And their source of revenue from their land. And a last note before I wrap up, I plan on being back here before you all, at least once per quarter, provide updates. I know there are questions and, you know, I'm happy to provide answers as best as I can, so with that, I lose my presentation and thank you.
I have quite a few comments from the historical preservation and historical society. That. This project has not been very forthcoming in supporting projects that deal with historic. Preservation and historic. Teachings. And I know that that would certainly make that group a lot happier. If you would contact them and get some, some kind of projects worked out. To talk about what you're doing, how it's benefiting, and. Where people can get to it, read it, take a trail and walk on it, something like that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to if there's a connection.
Get with you and I'll give you some phone.
It's great, thank you.
I'm just going to let the public comment, I don't share the same sentiment as my predecessor when it comes to this particular set of wind turbines, so I'm saddled with that decision.
Henry, just a few questions. ADLS lighting system, there has been a few emails that came to me that said. And showed a picture of the FAA website, bi-turban site, and various stages of approval. Could you speak to me how that works as a non- authoritative idea, how ADLS is approved by the FAA, I know when I fly over and what they look like, but I don't know how they're approved.
Yeah, so it is a whole separate approval process in addition to the turbines themselves. When we first file the turbines, the FAA does a, a full obstruction evaluation, are there impacts to navigable airspace? There's often a public comment portion of that, sixty days, and that's like a nine-month process. If you're lucky to have wind turbines reviewed by the FAA, once you receive those approvals. Would you know that those are viable turbine locations from the FAA's perspective, then you submit an aircraft lighting detection system based on all of those locations that were previously approved. So it's a stepwise procedure, and it's an iterative process because, you know, you file that in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. You allow them to the field to do all your pre-construction surveys, you might have to microsite, what is called an FAA process. And that could cause you to resubmit to the FAA for ADLS.
Okay, and so it is your, your hope and your thought that every turbine that will be constructed will be ADLS.
That's right, as, as it was previously approved, and the, and the map here in the presentation, this is an example of the radar light of sight. For the radar for the western phase, and this phase in particular has exceptional radar light of sight, so we're confident that FAA will, will. Approve the updated proposal.
Okay, and then I've also heard that there's no final sighting map for the turbines and their locations. Is that indeed correct, and let's let you answer that question.
Yeah, we provided a, a site plan for the turbines as a part of the start of construction. I believe it's actually the insert that was here in the presentation, the final sighting plan. The project writ large, we're working on right now, and that will be submitted prior to the recommencement of construction for the project real well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that an industry standard procedure, or is this something new ground that you guys have caught? And is that an industry standard procedure, or is this something new ground that you guys have cut as a different wind project? They would be different in northern county versus the southern county, or is this process very similar?
Yeah, so it, it is typical to submit the site plan just prior to you, your intent to construct those locations. So, because like I said, we have been performing the, the field surveys. There are minor microsighting, different drainage, you know, crossing designs that we update. And so we would want to have the latest and greatest set of designs that are submitted to the county before we construct those locations.
And then the final piece with regard to AV, aviary birds bats, will there be any mitigation with this project with regard to those things?
Yes, and that is something we're actively working with the National Wildlife Service on finalizing. Been in conversations with them for years, but the, I believe it's called Identiflight for specific eagle concerns, that is something that we're meditating.
An Identiflight?
Identiflight detects, can detect a bird approach and automatically trigger certain turbines to go offline. So it's an automatic, kind of like how the ADLS is for the lighting system within the project, it's automatic bird detection for specific turbines.
Thank you, Henry.
I guess I now have questions. The percentage of change, would you say, from your submitted plan to your as-built? The number of turbines didn't change. And you're, you're saying the turbines themselves will be located with relative positions to the original plan, but having to change due to slope, soil condition, that's what you're accounting for?
That's correct, correct. No wholesale changes to the project plans. This is just, you know, you go from a 30% design to a 75% design.
Okay, more per accuracy than intent.
That's right.
And then what is the height AGL on these turbines that you're proposing?
Yes, I believe, and I, I'll have to follow up to confirm, but I believe the tallest is 606 feet. That's the largest.
Is that to the midcelle, or is that to the top?
To the very tip of the blade, and I can double check. There are two turbine technologies that we're basing our final decision on. One is a Vestas machine, one is a Nordex machine. One of them has a higher capacity than the other, so if we go with that machine, it's a little bit taller, but we need fewer overall locations. And that decision is, is not, not been finalized yet. We expect that this year as soon as, well, frankly, as soon as the tariff situation gets a little clearer.
Okay, and then you're, I'm assuming, what is, what is the service life? I know what the service life used to be on a turbine 20 years ago. I don't know what the current production is estimated at.
Yeah, everything is minimum 35 years. Projects that we install today, modern projects, could go 50 years and beyond, at which point, you know, we would have to consider, go back to our landowners and talk about extending leases, et cetera. But the site is designed, certified, minimum 35-year useful life.
But you have no plans to remove them at this point?
There is a decommissioning bond.
That was a self-bonding agreement, I believe.
That was a DEQ requirement, and I believe it was also a requirement of, it may have been a requirement of the WEX permit, but that was a condition. We posted that bond last year, and that was a condition prior to commencement of construction.
That's all part of the industrial sighting permit process.
I'm just, it sounds like a natural gas well. After its useful life is over, nobody's around to pick up the tab.
Yeah, it's common industry practice nowadays to bond those projects upfront, to make sure they don't look like Altamont-Pott Pass or West Texas.
Do you have to dynamite the bases to get them out?
Dynamite? I don't believe so. I don't believe so. We remove everything within at least three feet of the surface. Most of the foundation is abandoned in place. So if, it would be more impact than actual construction to try to remove those foundations.
Yeah, because those foundations are massive. I mean, I don't know how many yards of concrete they are.
500 cubic yards on average, about 70, 60 to 70-foot diameter.
And it's a conical, it's a inverse conical.
Right. Right, so the only thing above ground is a pedestal, and that's what, yeah. Well, thank you. I'll stick around. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
I was gonna say, do you, do you want to hear from Mitch Edwards or Mark Stewart on behalf of their clients?
Yes, and then we'll go through other people that would like to make comments. Is that okay with you, Mitch?
Thinking about, I'm sure, members of the commission, Mitch Edwards with Nicholson Tange, who represents Michelle White, Mariah White, and her husband Stephen. The the discussion here today has been frankly quite disappointing to us. And we, to be blunt, we feel like we had some smoke pouring up our tailpipe here. And to start out with is the final site plan. That's required to be submitted pursuant to statute after approval. It shows the final locations of potential structures and facilities. There was two things I think that were said that I took away. One was that there was a plan that was provided, and it was in the packet of materials that was just given to you. I assume that what's being referenced is on the start of construction phase, excuse me, page, dealing real-time wind project phase one, which simply shows the location of three roads. Doesn't show any turbine locations, doesn't show anything else. Then we, then we heard that during the process of, of completing, you know, the final designs for construction, but we also heard at the same time that in order to submit to the FAA for the ADLS lighting, that they have to microsite, and they have to have specific sites. So either they have the specific sites for those turbines and can submit that to the FAA, but they can't seem to put together a plan, a project plan, to submit to the commissioners in accordance with state law that has those because they might move them. So that's, that's number one. Number two is, with respect to the ADLS lighting itself, we previously showed you the 2022 and the 2023 submissions. There was approximately 50 that were submitted in 2022 and approximately another 50 that were submitted in 2023. We also showed you that the FAA website and database shows which of those have been approved for ADLS lighting and those that have not yet been approved for ADLS lighting. What we heard was that we've submitted stuff, but we haven't gotten the final approval from the FAA. They're calling it updated information, but it's not updated information. It's specific to turbines. And it would be real simple for ConnectGen to come in here with the final site plan that says, look, here's where all of our turbines are going to be located based on the microsighting data, longitude, latitude, that we were required to give to the FAA. And here is the ADLS FAA approval for all of those turbines. Here's turbine number one, here's turbine number two, here's turbine number three, et cetera. They haven't done that. They could have done that today if they indeed had those approvals, but they can't do it because they don't have them. Instead, let's talk about, gee, how much money is this going to bring in? And what, what we're doing here is exactly the MO that's happened on other wind projects, including the Roundhouse project over in Cheyenne, where it is, let's keep dragging this along, let us go ahead and begin construction, and after construction begins, there's nothing you can do about it. And some poor gal is going to be, or some poor property owner is going to be sitting there saying, they're not doing this, they're not doing this, this is happening, and there's going to be finger pointing. And now is the time to make sure that that doesn't happen in Albany County by requiring them to provide the proof and evidence that they have met all the criteria before they begin construction, before they begin digging holes for turbine bases. That's not happened. What we also didn't hear was any address with respect to the updated noise study, and the fact that that study coincidentally stops at the average wind speed. We know that if it's an average, that means there's wind speeds above, and there's wind speeds below, but they didn't address anything above.
Was that a 20 mile an hour?
It was 22 miles an hour.
22 mile an hour.
Yes. Average, and so there was nothing above that wind speed. And if you were out there yesterday and today, you'd know that those winds were blowing pretty darn flipping along, and guess what? We need to know, what is the noise study for the times in Laramie in Albany County when that wind is above the average wind speed and those turbines are, are turning? Or they guarantee that they're shutting those turbines down once they hit 22 miles an hour? Those are the issues that they can easily address, that they won't address, and they haven't addressed, and we're very disappointed that they didn't address here today. So to sum it up, our concerns that we've laid out to this board with respect to their permit conditions, they did not address them at all. And, and that's our concern, and that's, that's why we're severely disappointed in what we heard today. Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Mark Stewart. I'm with Davidson Canyon, and I represent Monahan Farms, the own property just to the south and west of the project, and, and I believe you guys have been and received my letter. Frankly, as I said in my letter, I'm, I'm at a loss as to understand why the permit has not been suspended or revoked. The handout that you were given today shows you where they located access roads. And they've begun 10 turbine foundation location excavations. Those are right here, right next to Monahan Farms. The submission they gave to the ISC is that those wind turbines have not been approved for ADLS. The submission they made to the ISC in September said that in the fourth quarter, they would be submitting documentation for approval of ADLS for 58 wind turbines. We understand today that they may have done that, but they haven't received it yet, but they have begun construction of those turbines for which they do not have ADLS approval. That was a material condition that this board and these commissioners imposed on the, on this project. They needed ADLS approval, and the condition says that they will seek a variance for those turbines which do not receive it. They have begun construction on turbines that have not received ADLS lighting. Section P under the wind, the wind energy regulations from Albany County says the applicant, owners or operators failure to materially comply with any of the above provisions shall cause a W E C S permit to be revoked or suspended under these regulations. Seems pretty ambiguous to me. They've begun construction without seeking variances for these turbines. I won't go over any, plenty more ground that Mitch did, but I, I just am at a loss to understand why the permit and why they're allowed to extend it forward having violated one of the permits, the terms of the permit. Well, thank you, unless you have any questions for me also.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment? Yes.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to go ahead and speak for myself as a very close neighbor of the project, and you know, I think this project is ill-advised for a lot of reasons, but setting that aside, my personal more critical concern is how close are some of these turbines going to be to my home on my property on Corral Springs? I don't think like, like some of the gentlemen said, that we've had a solid site plan or even anything close to it. I believe that information was gleaned from the A B L S information about where the turbines might be, and as I've already mentioned in a, in the email and, and inclusion that I sent before, one of the sites is less than a mile from my home on our property, and I think it's required to be at least a mile. And in addition, I will say that even the mile setback, what I wonder about that is if that's not proportional to the turbine height, was the mile established at a point where no one imagined that they'd be running turbines this large? And therefore, my question is, is the mile setback even still appropriate for this turbine size? I realize it's probably said in concrete, but, so having said those things, what I would like to say is, we kind of hear this mishmash of turbine sites are, are decided at this point, but yet they can be changed, and it's kind of hard to decide about that. Why isn't it possible, given that people have their own property adjacent to this whole project, to have input to say, why do you have to put these right here so close to our homes? Whereas you could, you could, in good faith, provide a little nicer setbacks than the mile and still really not impact the overall project very much at all. So I think that's the point I'd like to make is, it feels like, you know, yes, the mile, I think, is being violated in, in particular to my home. I would like to see that rectified, but that's, you know, it's not that much less than a mile. But I guess my big question is, why couldn't they in good faith, though, you know, give us more slack than that, given the size and the scope of this project?
Sir, I didn't get your name.
Brian Carpenter.
Thank you, Brian.
And our property is on Corral Springs Road, which is close to Boulder Ridge Road.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else like to make comment? Come on up. Who are you today?
Anne Brandt, Albany County Conservancy, and I know, I know you all. When I go and I listen to Mark Stewart, and then that poses questions running through my members' minds. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you revoke the permits? Are you watching the economics of wind energy development right now? Are you watching Vestas? I think that speaks towards, do you want to have all these violations in view of the county and the fact that there hasn't been a good neighbor relationship? I go back to when the project was approved in 2021, and comments were made that it would be nice that ConnectGen could be a good neighbor. And so I advise you to look at the bigger picture and look at the impacts of the county of posturing. Rail Thai Wind was a million dollars short. It was stated clearly during both Industrial Siting Council discussions of Rail Thai Wind. And then, yes, Repsol became the purchaser of Rail Thai Wind, and that was a whole topic of two other articles in the Cowboy State Daily regarding that. And it was very frustrating to people in this county that the financials that were adequate were actually prior to Repsol taking over. There wasn't even a letter of intent. So that's who you're working with, and I advise you to have a deeper perspective moving forward, given the comments made today and the concerns in front of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anne.
I'm Mariah White. I also live off of Corral Springs Road. I seem to have a lot of representation here today. I just wanted to add a little bit more information to some of the things that, that my attorney Mitch has already spoken about, but also add a few more things that struck me about Repsol's presentation. The first one that I found very suspect is that as a part of what David Gerch is supposed to accept as post-application approvals includes the requirement of a foundation, design code, and standard. That is one of the documents that Repsol or ConnectGen submitted to the county. In this particular document, they have to commit to a turbine type, model, and make. It is not open for questions. And, and when they submitted this foundation, design code, and standards, I have it sitting right in front of me on my computer. They submitted it on September 23rd of 2024. The only turbine type that they committed to is a Nordex in 163. Uh in one sixty-three um five point nine mega megawatts. Um, and so there should be no talk of switching turbine type at this point. Unless they are going to provide a lot more information to the county about that particular, the other turbine type that they're thinking of doing. But really, I think as according to the um to the permitting process. Prior to construction, they have to commit to a turbine type and model and make. Um, so that's just something to point out. Um. Also, um. I uh I want to give you this analogy, okay? Um. So let's pretend this is the story, all right? Johnny um is at the end of fourth grade. And he um has a lot of things um missing uh from homework assignments. He hasn't mastered the skills yet to be able to be promoted to fifth grade. The school comes to him and says. Hey, um, you have this missing, this missing, this missing. And you need to submit these before we allow you to be promoted to fifth grade. So Johnny goes home, he writes his homework, he um submits it to the school. And they say, okay, go ahead. You get to be promoted to fifth grade now. Um, and uh and then a neighbor notices that Johnny's falling behind in fifth grade. And that he's not doing as well as he should. And he's also being disruptive and um affecting his other the fellow students in the class. So um that neighbor goes to the school and says, well, let's take a look at this um homework that he submitted. To in order to be passed into fourth into fifth grade. When they look at the homework, it's um it's basically a letter saying, we will do this in the future. I will do this, but I haven't done it yet. So sorry. But here's the letter, here's my homework. And it doesn't actually have what he needed to complete, what he needed to do in order to get to fifth grade. So then the school has a decision. Do you, do you um make him go back to fifth grade, fourth grade? Or do you allow him to stay in fifth? So obviously, the um, you know, Repsol or Connect Gen is Johnny. They've submitted these things. So is it a violation? Um, that of the contract that he didn't complete? All of his homework. It's the same as Repsol. They didn't complete. All of the requirements that needed for the WEX permit and actually for the ISC's permit either. They are just as deficient for the DQ's requirements as they are for for the county. So um they need to be, their permit needs to be suspended until they provide hard proof. Of ADLS approval for every single turbine location. That was, that was erroneous of of Mr. Henry to say that it's an overall project. No, it's not. I we showed you on the FAA's website exactly each turbine location gets both. That hazard of no determination of hazard and then also the, or excuse me, the determination of no hazard. And ADLS is a completely separate process that is determined by each turbine individually. Now, nine out of the ten holes that Repsol has already dug do not have ADLS approval. When are you going to ask them for the actual proof instead of taking it by their, just their word? That was just his word. Oh, we're going to do this. Oh, we're going to do this. Well, they haven't submitted anything to the FAA. Since twenty twenty-three. In their report that they gave you on ADLS, they said that they were going to do it the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four. Well, all of those submissions have already been updated onto the FAA's archive website. There's not a single submission for Rail Thai in twenty twenty-four. And so far in twenty twenty-five, there has yet to been one either. Also, one of those ten holes that they dug has never been submitted for anything as as far as ADLS goes. It has not been, has not been submitted for. Uh determination of no hazard and it has not been submitted for um for ADLS. So they've already committed to breaking this condition. And not giving you guys proof. To to back it up. Um, and so I I don't understand why you're not demanding that proof before allowing them to move forward. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come forward and make comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Carson Anderson. I used to own Ace Welding Sand Blaster. I used to own uh Ace Salvage here in Laramie. I used to own uh AAA recycling here and I also owned uh. Laramie Towing. So I'm real familiar. With the hoops at the county and the city. You have to jump through. And when I've done this, I've had to. Uh, put signage out when I wanted to change of usage for a property. You know, I've had to contact my neighbors. There's a whole litany of things to do. I've never been contacted by anyone. About the wildlife out there. I've had a moose in my yard three times this week, herds of elk, eagles on the mound. So not one time in fifteen years has anybody ever showed up, called or sent me a uh a questionnaire. I've never driven down the road and seen a sign that said, you know, uh. Uh wind turbine, Repsol, whoever's is has this project going. And so I just feel there's a real double standard as far as what I'm committed to do. And what Repsol is. Last time I was here, there was an old fellow from Centennial came in. And the question was, was this old boy gonna have to tear his house down? Because he had not filled out the application correctly. And you know, this guy's eighty years old. And so uh I'm just saying, I think there's a double standard here. Uh, I personally, obviously, I don't want the damn things within ten miles of my house. Uh, I've spent my life savings. I have a great place. Last thing I want to do is walk out in the morning on my deck. And see a hundred and fifty, six hundred, seven hundred foot wind turbines. But the point is, obviously, there's a double standard. Uh be between their permitting and and what I had been asked to do. In my business ventures. So, you know, I think uh. Uh, I think that's other than. Let's say this project. Goes through. When somebody's speeding down my road or misbehaving or whatever is happening. The problem I have is I don't have a phone number. I dial them and uh. I mean, I called the sheriff. He said, well, hey, my business, you know, I'm not ready at all. So. You know, somebody's operating on the weekend when they're not supposed to, you know, what roads aren't watered? You know, the question is, who do I call and do I just get blown off? Do I get results? And and if they are misbehaving and and not doing what they said, and I think Mariah said it best. They're showing. How willing they are to misrepresent. And so who do we call that said, hey, these people aren't playing by the rules? There ain't nobody to call. You know, it's too bad, so sad when it's all over. And so uh. That's all I got to say, guys. Thanks for tolerating me.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any, yes.
My name is uh Stephen Van Gundy. I live on Corral Springs also. I just have three like things. Um, I think that this project is a case of build it and find out. Um, because once they're built. Are they going to remove them? If if there's a discrepancy found. Um, so the Albany County and on that note, Albany County zoning regulations say that uh. Uh noise associated with wax operations shall not exceed fifty-five decibels. As measured at any point along the common property line, um except for short-term events such as severe weather events. Um, and so. I don't understand how a noise study can prove the fifty-five decibel. Level um at the property line if they don't even know what the cell they're using yet. Or even where the turbines are located, exactly. Um, now, of course, the zoning regulations don't clarify. Exactly what that fifty-five decibels, how is that calculated? I mean, is it the average wind speed? You know, I'm an engineer by trade, not licensed in my, make that clear, but my my, I'm a civil engineer in other states, professional. Um, and I I deal in traffic and roadways and when we design a signal, a traffic signal. Or, you know, left turn lane, um. We go off of the peak. Um, peak hour traffic volumes. Um, and so. You know, ninety-fifth percentile, that sort of thing. I would not want to be in this room right now if that. Um, if that ceiling was designed to only take the average load of whatever's up there. Um, so. Do not, uh, so I fear, I fear that they're gonna, you know, um, build it and find out. Regardless of a lot of things, um. The noise studying and then also construction activity started in December twenty twenty-four. That's true. Uh, it's rather suspicious. I know. They can, they can work however they want, but they did begin in, I would say, middle, late December twenty twenty-four and then. It was very, very odd because they worked every single day, including Christmas Eve and Christmas. Uh, ten hours a day from, I I believe it was, it was uh six, seven AM. It was early in the morning all the way through dark. Um, and the funny thing is that on uh, they were working December thirty-first all day, full day. But then January first, done. And they just, they just parked their equipment. It was very strange. So um that, I just, I can't prove anything, but that's just, that just smells of, they just wanted to be able to say, we started work in twenty twenty-four. Um, and um since, since um. That was that I could tell they were, they were digging foundations. And when we say dig foundations, you know, I'm used to track hoes and I I I watch roadway construction work. They must have been just doing mass grading, not fine grading of those holes. Um, but um, and they built some roads. But um, I have not seen any actual construction work happen. Um, since December thirty-first at the end of daylight hours. So, and that's just, that's just weird. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone? Okay, come on up.
Um, Loretta Anderson, Corral Springs, we're popular here today. The gentleman said earlier about, I can't remember what it was called, about bird trigger thingy that wind turbines which. Shut down. My question is, how long does it take the blades to stop turning? How far away from the turbine will the bird trigger the signal to shut it down? I mean, those, I can't imagine those turbines. And stop. You know, is it gonna detect a bird that's so far away and it turns around, goes somewhere else and never does come by there? That just doesn't seem logic. Next question. Want to know the size of the turbines before we put projects? Somebody else touched on that. How deep in the ground? You removed three foot of the concrete, but how much remains in the ground? After that? I mean, how deep are the pads that they put these turbines on? I know, so three foot, that's like, gee, thanks. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comment? Right, we have a motion to um. Well, I would like to thank each of you that came today and made comment. I appreciate that very much and. We will take and revise everything they've said today. Thank you.
Um, we. Go into executive session pursuant Wyoming statute sixteen or chapter sixteen, section four, four oh five, eight. Subsection seven.
Twelve thirty-six.
At twelve thirty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Sorry to boot everybody. There's everybody in here supporting.
Hi, if you throw that on this side, I could reach.
Why would I do that? Just because I would be too.
Mr. Mariah White.
I'm gonna have to go get my glasses here, Stephen. I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, check this. It gets cold.
Yeah. I would think if we leave at four, should be fine, but if we need to. But if we need to leave here, I could put that too. I don't have anything to set up.
Okay, well, thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, it's executive session, so nobody.
I never even, sometimes I try to do it the night before and then I gotta think of the story. I'm like, oh crap. I probably better, because I didn't even realize until I got to work this morning too. I'm like, oh crap.
Thank you, you saved me.
Anytime, I'm uh happy to do it. Never hurts to have a reminder. That was on here, but I texted you very.
I forget about it sometimes too. I always try to look at the agenda though, like Monday night or Thursday morning, just as a reminder. Sort it back out for you. No worries. No worries. With her little demand of self. Well, what's the other?
I mean it.
So here's the deal, random water cost.
I said Pete knows how to do it too.
I just didn't want it to be. Didn't do this, but I'm gonna do this. I don't know how many that, you know, I can.
Do not get us into executive session on all this stuff. If Terry doesn't.
Yeah, I paused the recording. Um, do you want to stop uh Ben or just pause with the mute? Um, do you want to stop, uh, Ben, or just pause with the mute?
Pause.
Yeah. Yeah, deal with cameras.
Everything you ask.
I know. Then if you ask me a whole.
Yeah, well, it's material costs and.
I should see your face in person. I see Mitch. I'll say my hands are freezing. Sorry. This room is super noisy.
Did you get anything? I mean, I got Dennis's.
And then we cut the audio.